Good evening. Today is Thursday, March 24th, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM. I now call to order the regular board meeting of ISD 191 Board of Education. So I welcome everybody here today, present here, as well as those who are watching online. Director Alt, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werff.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. All those in favor, oh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. First, we will start our meeting tonight with the Student Performance and Achievement Committee of the Whole regarding the world's best workforce, graduation, and college and career readiness. And we have Amina Oftedal, Director Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight on the tremendous programming and work preparing 191 students for post-secondary life, college, and careers. As you can see, there are many of us here tonight, each sharing one of the elements of the support and programming of our secondary students. I will let each of them introduce themselves as they move forward to present. Tonight's presentation will include some data points demonstrating the progress. We'll demonstrate the progress of students measured by the world's best workforce for graduation and college and career readiness. This includes a snapshot into the rigorous coursework, or coursework that provides the opportunity for students to earn college credit. So when we use the phrase rigorous coursework, that is how we are defining it for this moment. You will also receive an update on high school pathways and ways that students are supported in their post-secondary planning. And I am so pleased for you to have the opportunity to hear from students from BOSS and students from BHS as they share their experiences. I'd like to introduce Dr. Brandon Lowe. He is a CESA Coordinator, and he's going to share some data with you.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to see you all again. So. Okay, so on this first slide, I know you've seen this quite a bit before, but you'll recall that the four-year graduation rate for BHS for the class of 2020 remains at 85%. And we established the goal of 90% for the class of 2021. And official data on the class of 2021 has not been released yet by the State Department of Minnesota. All right, so the four-year grad rate for, this is BOSS, and then also BHS is listed on this. In addition to the four-year grad rate, BOSS serves students working toward five- and six-year graduation, which you of course know. And I will invite Principal Kelly Ron from BOSS to provide a little more insight into their graduation.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Ron, the principal at Burnsville Alternative High School. Just some of the factors that 2020, spring of 2020, had for BOSS that might be unique. Well, not unique, because everything that's affected us from COVID has been unique. When we talk to a lot of our students, we spent a lot of time working with basic needs, housing, food. We did keep in touch with all of our students during that time. A lot of them, we were a support, and many of them were planning to start when COVID was over in the fall. And obviously, we know that that didn't quite happen. So we visited all of those 2020 possible grads. And again, this is four-year graduation rate. So for BOSS, a lot of our students graduate in five years or six years. And in fact, we just had a conversation the other day, some of them are graduating now that were 2020 grads. So the important thing is, they didn't give up, they came back. Some of them took 18 months off of school before we were finally fully in person this fall and came back and did finish. So that is the good news. The data doesn't look like as good a news as it shows. However, I do feel like many of them did come back. We also had a unique challenge in that our students come third and fourth quarter to our school. So what makes BOSS unique and sometimes helps our students get to graduation is that relationship they build with our school. We're a smaller setting, we have that relationship, we can meet their individual needs. They came, many students, we have 30 to 50 new students start each quarter. So some of them came right when COVID hit, and some of them came during COVID in 2020. So those are all factors that might explain that data a little bit.
I think it's important just to recognize the service that our alternative school provides for students that come to them with whatever circumstances that have somehow resulted in them being behind for that four-year graduation and the personalized learning and support that they get at the alternative high school to meet those five- and six-year goals for graduation.
So regarding rigorous course enrollment, you'll notice that the two 2020 columns show the percentage of graduates participating in rigorous coursework during their four years of high school. Since the data from Minnesota Department of Education on the class of 2021 is not yet available, the 2021 column shows the percentage of graduates participating in rigorous coursework during their senior year only. The previous slide showed enrollment in rigorous courses. This graph shows the rate of college credits earned in the different types of courses. So you'll notice that while post-secondary enrollment options, so PSEO, has the highest rate of credit earned, keep in mind that PSEO also requires that students have additional resources, such as transportation to the university or any of those, you know, those challenges to get off campus and get to another place. Now concurrent enrollment and college in the schools brings those courses to our high schools, opening access to more students that have different resources.
And just to share the work that students have done. In the class of 2021, there were 1,408 college credits earned. This does not include credits that could possibly have been earned with the AP scores of three and above. These are the ones that are on the books with a transcript. And that equals over $700,000 of college tuition that our seniors walked out the door with. And I think that's just a great way to make a start for a lot of our students. So the 1,400 is for all of the students in grades nine through 12 last year. The senior class, the class of 2021, earned 767 of those credits, so almost half of them, and of almost over $400,000. So really offering those opportunities and seeing increases in the number of students of color who now are able to access those in the classrooms on campus. And so we've seen those numbers dramatically change. So we'll hand it over to Director Funston to give us an update on partnerships and pathways.
Good evening. We know, and research tells us, that when our students are able to interact with the community, with our business partners, and experience the workplace, they do better in school, they make better decisions around which pathway they want to pursue, and they make informed course selections, all leading to graduation, college and career, and success in our communities. This year, we're doing a lot of exciting things, and this includes all of our business partners. These activities that you see on the left of the screen are primarily with our business partner, our business education network partner, the Burnsville Chamber. And this year in the spring, we're doing a virtual student job fair. All of our students are looking for work, our businesses are looking for workers. And because of the pandemic, we have moved to a virtual job fair. We have many businesses already posting for our students. These are very healthy wage-earning positions. And this is, might be the start of a new trend for us, but we're definitely looking to place our students in the community in good-paying jobs. This summer also, as part of our Youth Skills Training Grant from the Department of Labor and Industry, we want to start a girls' car clinic. This is a way for us to get underrepresented students, primarily girls, interested in an automotive career. There are many garages across the nation that are female-owned and female-driven. And we don't know why that doesn't happen in Burnsville. So we want to launch this. And this is a great opportunity to get our girls interested. We also expect to have our teacher externships again. This is an opportunity for our teachers to get out in the workplace, experience the workplace, and understand how their content area is applied in work situations so that they can bring back those real examples of what content looks like when people do it for a living. And then they can use those examples in their classrooms. Along with the Chamber, this year, we'd like to host an employer breakfast, primarily introducing our existing employer partners and new employer partners to the wonderful things that we have going on in the district. And so this is in collaboration with our Chamber. And then hopefully, this summer, we will be launching the preparation for the associate degree. And this is tied to a grant that has been submitted for $171, which would provide the basis for the support to backwards map the preparation of our students to be able to be successful tackling an associate's degree while in high school. This fall, along with our Communications Department, we'll host the Realtor Summit. We really want our Realtors in the community to come to our school district to see all of the wonderful things that we're doing, and then be able to promote that to new families in our community. We'll do a family fest again. This was paused during the pandemic. We're going to revamp this activity, and it'll be a new experience to be able to bring families in the community into our schools so that they can see firsthand what we're doing. And that will tie directly with College Knowledge Month, which is an entire month where our students have a whole host of opportunities to explore colleges, think about what they're going to be doing for their futures, apply for FAFSA with support for people who can help them, because this is a difficult task for anyone who's tried to do it. And then in the winter, we know that starting early, helping our families see the possibilities and opportunities in our district, it needs to start early. And so we want to bring our elementary students over to the high school. They need to see what they're going to be able to do once they're in high school. And we need to get our young people, our youngest people, excited about what they can do when they're in high school. And so we want to start that in the fall. And then in the spring, come full circle, we hope to host in-person our student job fair. And then emerging post-COVID, our BCTV partnership was paused because they also were not coming necessarily to their office at the BCTV cable station at the high school. And so we want to re-energize that partnership and increase the enrollment in our media production courses. We're also exploring our cybersecurity credentialing. This is incredibly important. We, as a district, are going through some of those pieces right now, making sure that we are secure in cyberspace. So we want our students to be able to be prepared for that exploding career field. We are partnering in our construction. We are launching a partnership with Industry or Sleep in Heavenly Peace is the name of the nonprofit. So far, we have provided over 400 beds with all of the bedding to our families in our district where there were no beds for the students. And so this is a nonprofit, it's a build. So our students will learn the value of not only learning how to build the beds, but then also the value of volunteerism and giving back to the community in a significant way. We're also going to be, as a matter of fact, we just had a meeting yesterday, we'll be placing several students in paid work experience in our local manufacturers. And we are re-engaging some finance partnerships. And we have a new idea for our space at Burnsville High School, which was formerly Firefly. And with the presentation with Director Oftedal, right after this, I'll talk a little bit more about that space. And then finally, we will be increasing our education pathway and working diligently to engage more students and more students that look like our students, representing our district, who choose to go into the field of education. And I think that Principal Ron is after me.
High school principals.
Good evening again. Just a couple of bullet points about what we do at BOSS to get students college and career ready. Some of it will be the same as what you'll hear from BHS, but then we do some things that are a little bit different at BOSS. We do Zello lessons, and I'm assuming you've heard of Zello. We have, we replaced Naviance this year with the Zello program for students to discover, research, and explore their possibilities for post-secondary life. And we've really taken that and used that program extensively this year, where each grade level has done at least one lesson per month in that program. Another thing we do is a college and career ready checklist. What do students need when they leave our school? We have student graduation document folders with all the things that student needs, their transcript, their future classes from now until they graduate, their continuous learning plan. One thing that isn't in this slide that I was thinking about when Dr. Funston was talking about the pathways is we've developed a partnership with BHS this year, well, actually, last year, to really meet often, Chris Belmont is on that, and we, to identify students early so that we can help them reach that four-year graduation rate. And one of the things related to college and career readiness is then we can get students to be part-time students at BOSS and BHS and access the pathways so they can get back on track. And we have students going back and forth now more than ever. And next year, we have a large group of students that are going back for the pathways in the afternoon and coming to us in the morning. So that's a huge accomplishment for us in the last year. So I just have a quick video about our future fair that we had this year. Oh goodness. I don't, I'm.
You just log in.
It says it won't log me in. How do I go back to the slideshow?
I think Tim may have to do it.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't. I'll just keep going in, we can. It was a video from our students talking about a future fair that we had this in February. And we created the future fair with our collaborative team, which includes special ed, ESL teacher, general ed teacher, and our counselors. And they meet weekly to talk about college and career readiness for our students. And so we had a future fair based on what we knew students were hoping to do, just on their general ideas, looking at their continuous learning plans, which is our second bullet point. Each student has to make one and revisit their goals quarterly with their advisor. And so we had a whole school full of different people come in, and students spent the day asking questions. And so the video was just talking about what they learned, what their future plans were, what we did that day. And then finally, we have strive time, which is an advisory period that we have throughout the day. And we really focus this year on SEL strategies, social-emotional learning strategies. And we try to incorporate those into that time as well as into all of our classes. But we review those continuous learning plans so that we can personalize the learning for each student during that strive time. And then we also do credit recovery courses to get students back on track so they can graduate as quickly as possible or access BHS programs.
So I'm taking notes from Principal Ron on ways to support towards graduation because our BOSS staff really are like experts in that. And so we lean on them and that partnership. So just a little quick thing about me. I grew up in a, I grew up with two parents who had college degrees. They were in the professional world. I had access to resources. And then the school community I was at through K through 12, I had really a lot of peers that had very similar experiences to me. So I would say I went, I grew up in a college-certain atmosphere in a lot of sense. And then I've realized as I've gotten older that not everybody has that same experience. And so we have students that experience a college-uncertain upbringing through their K-12 experience. And so it is up to us to provide that certainty because they're just, if not more brilliant, they have powerhouse families, but they may not have that opportunity knowledge and that access that was certain for me. So that is really our approach at Burnsville High School and even before Burnsville High School, to make sure our students have that opportunity knowledge, that access to rigorous learning, and that agency. And so just to understand those three terms, they come from Avid, right? And they, and they're, they also are living in our core values in 191. And just opportunity knowledge is, this is what I need. Rigorous learning is, this is how I will get what I need. And then agency is, this is why nothing will stop me from getting what I need. That's what we're trying to cultivate. And it takes so many different layers and different approaches and different access points depending on the student. So you'll see us taking things from BOSS, our advisory system, our success teams, our using Zello and different college and career life readiness tools to help add those different layers for our students to feel those three things, that opportunity knowledge, aware of what the system can provide for them, rigorous learning, so they have the tools and skills, and then that agency, that confidence to know how awesome they are. The video is.
You can keep going, Kizra.
That's all I was going to share for the support. And then I want to make sure, like, I'm not going to speak for all the affinity spaces and the work that's being done at Burnsville High School right now because Associate Principal Bakair should be on the mic to speak for that. She's spearheaded it, along with Tommy Gaston, our cultural liaison. That affinity work addresses all three of those buckets, that opportunity knowledge, that access, and especially that agency development.
Pants closed.
We're experiencing a few technical difficulties here this evening. As I can speak to the next slide as they're going back to it, I think it's evident as you listen to Principal Ron and Dr. Belmont that we really are about developing a culture of college and career readiness, that this isn't about identifying a program here, identifying a program there. It really is about embedding the work of ensuring that all of our students across our system are college and career ready. And so there are so many different ways that that manifests itself in terms of, you've heard about advisory, Zello, ACT for all of our juniors, Avid, our pathways of doing college fairs, financial aid nights. It's just embedded in everything we do. And the idea there is, as Chris was talking about, is we have a lot of students that if they don't see it and if they don't experience it at our high school, they may not know what they need to know in terms of moving forward and really striving to be their personal best. And so when I use the word culture, I'm really just saying that all of these things are part of who we are. And the idea is, is that regardless of any of us, these are the things that our school communities believe in. And ultimately, we want to work to where these are the things that our students believe in, and these are what our students expect. The other culture piece is the culture of support. You know, we know that everybody has a unique story. Everybody comes every day with their own needs and different needs. And those really could be academic. We're finding out this year, and I think you've heard that a lot, is a lot more of it is social and emotional at this point. But there's so many different things that are, again, embedded in what we do. Our work around CPSS, the different college access programs we have, College Possible, Avid, Upward Bound, the addition of Dreamline and dedicated credit recovery teachers to really help students, not just academically with support, but socially and emotionally, and with all those other non-academic pieces of preparing yourself for life after high school. And so Dr. Belmont alluded to Associate Principal Bakair, and she's here this evening. And you also see on this slide Amplify Student Voice and the fact that our work has to be adaptive and relational. And we believe strongly in that. And it is, it's just been so incredible this year as a leader to have the right people on the team and to see the work that they, along with our students, have done. Because in the end, it really is about belonging, and that's what's going to take us to the next level. So Associate Principal Bakair is going to share a bit about student voice, and then I believe Dr. Belmont is going to invite up our students.
And so as part of advancing student voices, we would like to show the BOSS students sharing their work. So it's very exciting to be able to share what they saw at the future fair. If we can go ahead and start that.
On Tuesday, February 15th, 2022, Burnsville Alternative High School hosted a future fair in our International Student Commons. Students were called down in small groups to meet with 10 colleges, trade schools, universities, and four branches of the military.
Help me plan for my future by showing me the different opportunities that I have in Minnesota. They also plan to help me plan for my future by picking the college that I wanted to go to.
On Tuesday, February 15th, 2022, Burnsville Alternative High School hosted a future fair in our International Student Commons. Students were called down in small groups to meet with 10 colleges, trade schools, universities, and four branches of the military.
Help me plan for my future by showing me the different opportunities that I have in Minnesota. They also plan to help me plan for my future by picking the college that I wanted to go to.
By giving me more opportunities to look at, look at what careers you wanted to choose. It gave me options and explained what those options did, like the military and colleges near us.
It gave me a lot of opportunities to like think about.
It made me realize that there was a lot more opportunities than I thought.
I can go to a two-year college and transfer to a four-year college and also continue the career that I want to continue.
People can trash like other branches of the military and like join.
I didn't know that the military had like a space force.
I didn't know that there was as much opportunities for the kids in the school.
That I can do multiple majors at once.
My plan is to go to Hennepin Tech so I can become an architect.
Try the military.
Go to school for music production.
Going into the trade system.
When I get into college, I want to major in psychology to be a therapist and do an ROTC program.
I want to do psychology and maybe be a practitioner.
Hello, I'm Associate Principal Bakair. And some of you remembered me last year, I was CISA coordinator. At the high school now. So coming to the high school, I saw one of the needs was, while as a district we're doing an absolutely brilliant job of supporting teachers with culturally proficient school systems and training teachers and changing what is happening in the classroom, we needed to provide support for the students. We were missing something for the students. And so reaching out to my friends, going, something's like, one part is going really, really, really well. And we've created all of these opportunities, and things are changing in the classroom, but the change is not yet coming. Like, students aren't really seeing what's there or taking advantage of the opportunities and the pathways that have been created. So through just myself thinking, talking with friends, it was how do you empower the students? And from that idea came affinity groups. So how do we create spaces where students can come together with individuals who, and affinity groups can have many, it's other individuals who have thoughts like I do or other individuals who look like I do, who experience the world the same way that I do. So we had some of those, which we call them, those are our student-led affinity groups. And we had those, we have the Black Student Union, the Asian Student Association, the Muslim Student Association. These are all groups that were happening after school. One of the things that you've heard, and we heard Principal Ron refer to it, and we've heard Dr. Belmont refer to it, is those are really wonderful opportunities, but not all of our students can take advantage of things that happen after school. So I thought to myself, how do we bring the affinity group experience to the school day? And so we began, we're in the beginning phases of it, but we have quite a few affinity groups. We probably have over 200 students that are now participating in a during the school day affinity group. And so in a during the school day affinity group, you, we bring together students who are of like mind or many reasons. And so the one group, I would say are two very first groups, where one group is called the Black Girl Magic Group. So it is for young ladies who we say you identify as being black. Like, I don't get to decide if that for you. And we come together and we meet once a week in a community, in a community circle. And within that community circle, it is an opportunity when you walk into a space and you do not have to explain yourself to anybody. We have, we oftentimes will just say stuff, and the group will start laughing together because we understand. There is no need to explain why that was funny or why we were upset by that. We also just talk about setting standards for ourselves, creating, taking advantage of what is out there for ourselves, identifying hard parts of being a woman. Like, we've often had very hard conversations about some of the things that, that are told to us about women and black women and have had those conversations. And then it's turned into, the girls eventually run the group. They bring the topic. They write the lesson plan for the group, and they begin to have the conversation. And the whole part of that was to empower students so they feel that they belong. Because when you don't feel like you belong, you're not going to take advantage of the opportunity that's in front of you. And I've heard from many of the students from groups that they didn't feel like they belong in the building. And they feel like they belong when we start to have a group that meets, and there are students who look like them. And we talk about things that you may not normally be able to have a conversation with. And so I talk with Principal Hauke and Principal Belmont about this is the step of moving, changing what our pathways look like, changing so our pathways have a different representation of students because we provide this opportunity to practice being a leader within a space that's very comfortable. You then will feel comfortable going out and being a leader and taking a risk someplace else. So that's the point of our affinity groups. And I shout out to Ms. Malley, one of the high school teachers, because she heard about our Black Girl Magic affinity group. And the GSA, they used to previously be called Proud. They've changed their name because of politically, and they're the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. I'm like, that's right, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, the GSA. They were our second during the school day affinity group that started. And she, they have 30 students who regularly show up to group, have conversations. She, some of the students have told her it is the best part of their week. It's where they go and they feel heard, they feel known. They don't have to explain anything about who they are. And I hear the same things about students in the Black Girl Magic. I think another example is, we had, I'm going to look to Dr. Belmont because we had our Latino-Latino students. They've started three different groups. And one of them is an academic, they wanted an academic affinity group for Latino-Latino students. I'm like, how, you can't ask for anything more. So it goes back to when Mr. Hauke and I have talked to a couple years ago when the YMCA came in. And the students said this is what they wanted. They wanted spaces where their voices were heard in safe spaces. And safe spaces is, we all want to go into that place. It's like the Cheers bar where everybody knows your name. You don't have to explain who you are, what your thinking is. You just, you show up, and there's this amazing feeling of comfort. And I know for me, I tell everyone every time after I do one of my affinity groups, I feel like I can go take on the world, that I can do anything you ask me to do. And that I can just, and that I can change things because there's so much power and leadership that is demonstrated in that room. And I know that our students, that, and I like to say, you know, many of our affinity groups are for our students who feel marginalized within the building for whatever reason, that I know that that feeling of power and support is going to spread outside of that group because we have to practice it safely before we can go out and practice it or perform it with others. So that is, and so the affinity groups are, they're very much at the start. And another level of it, before we have our students who may hear about this, is we've also created what's called a Diversity Inclusion Belonging Committee. So the Diversity Inclusion Belonging Committee has representatives from all the affinity groups, whether it is a student-led affinity group after school or one of the teacher-led affinity groups. And this group of about 40 students has already had two meetings where we are getting together. And we, because I tell the students, I'm like, well, the adults think we need, we think we know what you want for diversity and equity, but we need to ask you what you want for diversity and equity. And they have some real opinions as a group. And they have real opinions when we're talking about career, culture, learning. In some places where we think that we've been very transparent with the students, we've sat and heard this representative group of students tell us, no, we don't feel like you've been transparent with us. And it's made us go, oh, we need to step back and then think about our approach because the, we feel that adult approach is making sense to us. It may not be translating to the students and the student groups the way that we have thought. So we're, we're excited about the two levels, the affinity groups at work and learning from the students. And we call it Diversity Committee for short, but it's Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bakair. And so now we just, we have two seniors for you to meet. They have not, we have no script, they're, they're coming. We got them, we got them dinner, that's it. So I invite Amaria and Zuheb up to just share their stories. And just, I just asked the board to be willing to ask them questions, clarifying anything about, about their experience, and then listening for those things about opportunity knowledge, access to rigorous learning, and that agency that we're seeking for students. See how we're doing? So welcome, students. If you don't mind just introducing yourself and share your grade. And then how about elementary and middle school? I actually don't know. Well, maybe, I know one. Elementary and middle school that you went to? And what's giving you the most joy right now with school? It could be a class, it could be something you're doing in school, whatever that is.
My name is Zuheb Usain. I'm a senior at Burnsville High School. I went to Gideon Pond Elementary School and Niklet Middle School. And one, one thing that has me going this year is I got two more months left till I graduate.
The end is near. Yeah.
Hello, my name's Amaria Renee. I'm a junior, not a senior.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, one thing that has me going, I will have to say, is my Black Girl Magic group.
Thank you. So in thinking about, oh, and where did you go to elementary and middle?
Oh, I was homeschooled. Mom and dad, military, so. I was off and on within Sky Oaks and Niklet, so.
Thank you, Amaria. So Amaria, would you answer first? Just a little more about, so you mentioned that the Black Girl Magic, like, some of those spaces that you're in during the school day that make you feel most comfortable? And then what parts make you feel least?
Um, the Black Girl Magic group, they do meet on Fridays, which is like a way to end my week, knowing that I got it. A lot of things that we do in the group is to make goals. And I'm probably like one of the biggest procrastinators ever, so it encourages me to do my homework over the weekend. So that's one thing that I love about it. And also, I just get to be myself. I love being myself. One part of the schools, I would say, that's just the least is probably like, maybe the social areas because there are a lot of conflicts in there, but also there are good parts to it, but everyone has their pros and cons.
Thank you. Zuheb, same question. Um, just what, like, those, are you in affinity spaces? That, like, that she'd mentioned the Black Girl Magic or any groups that you belong to during the school day or after? And then, like, so what, what makes you feel most comfortable and confident in school? And what's the most challenging for you?
I'm not in any groups, but like, I have like an internship that I do have to school. Then I go to my internship after 12 o'clock. And one thing that I like about the...
Yeah, yeah, just what's, so talk about that for a second. You're, because Zuheb's part of our Genesis Works internship programming. So just talk about what that is and like what your day is like. Don't these mics like pick you up no matter what? So you can just kind of just be natural, be yourself, and they'll pick you up. Share.
For my internship, I went through like a summer training because it's not guaranteed that you get it, but I gladly got it. And what I do is like, they put me in like a different, like, it depends where you live. So I live in Burnsville, so they put me in the closest workplace I could work at. And I work at Optum, if you've heard of it. Like, it's a healthcare group. And what I do is just I practice these tickets that they give me. Well, they're real tickets, but I just work on like finding the knowledge article for it. Then I'll give it to my supervisors, and they'll tell me if like, if it's like good to go and move on to the next step. So I just do like the beginner stuff. And I do this for four hours, five days a week, so 20 hours total. And I get paid 15 an hour.
So Zuheb leaves right after sea lunch, right? Right around noon? He's getting high school credit, he's getting paid. He's getting paid, and he's getting college credit that he can apply towards his next steps. We have 14 students, I believe, Dr. Funston would know for sure, in our Genesis Works program. You applied for that in 11th grade.
Yeah, March of 2021.
How'd you know about it?
My sister actually did it while she was a senior in 2020. I think this year is the most students from Burnsville that are participating at it. So I'm not surprised that a lot of teachers at Burnsville didn't know about it till now because we have like 14, you said?
Yes, we went from one to 14 for your grade. And threading it through the advisory program helped us, I think, really boost that interest and that knowledge.
Yeah, and I also like told my friends to do it because like, you don't lose nothing, you just, why not try? And I got like probably half of the 14 is my friends, so.
Zuheb, what, Amaria, what pathway do you most closely align to?
Um, so my pathways were split up. The beginning, I think I was just thrown into a class with business, and I found myself loving the class. During that class, I also, I started two businesses. Right now, my businesses are making six figures a year, so that's pretty good. But right now, I learned during like quarantine that sales are not guaranteed and you can't depend on them. So I started in the nursing pathway.
Awesome. Advice, let's, let's finish with advice that you have because, you know, Amaria mentioned it, it's not always perfect, right? There's things that are going on. These are high school students that are, that are navigating a lot of different waters. There's hard days and there's easy days. And there's, and there's just, there's fragile days. So we have our pathways and we have that opportunity. But also, like Ms. Bakair and others have alluded to, it's how we operate as humans within, within those pathways that's going to lead to the outcomes we're seeking. So just thinking about students, let's say, thinking about our, our current eighth graders, right? And because we have link crew leaders up here too. Thinking about advice you have for future students or advice you just have for us in helping more and more students succeed with college and career readiness.
Advice that I have is just like, if you get an opportunity, just go for it, you know? I mean, like, I wasn't really, when I first started, got that, when I got the email, I would like to join Genesis, I wasn't like that excited because I would have to like, I, last year, I mean, before COVID, I would get to stay at school. I didn't see my friends all the time. So if I did Genesis, I would have had to sacrifice time hanging out with my friends. But you have to sacrifice everything in life. So I just looked from, I looked at the video for you, you know, like, I'm going to get paid, I'm going to get college credit. You know, I'm just getting an opportunity, I'm not going to do anything. Just one thing I say is just go for it.
The advice I have is that no one's completely the same. So if you see yourself doing something, just do it.
Can I clap?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments or things we want to reflect on?
Thank you both, Zuheb and Amaria. Having our students, I always say this whenever we have student presenters, having you guys in front of us sharing your perspectives and your opinions and your thoughts, it makes, it really helps to ground out the work that we're doing to hear from you. And so thank you for, you know, at your age, I probably wouldn't have imagined myself, you know, doing the public presentation that you guys did. You did awesome, so thank you very much for that. You did awesome, so thank you very much for that.
Any other comments?
I did have questions. Can we, can we ask questions going back to that? Yeah, okay. So with the principal, Ron, with the, um, with the, is she still here? Oh, yep, there she is. So with the, the, the going between BAZ and the high school, I'm assuming that transportation is provided by the, by the district?
Yes, we do. Transportation is provided and sometimes it's worked out for other programs as well, other than just pathway programs. Sometimes it's been for a certain special education class or an English language learner class. So we have had it before. Our goal is to make sure we utilize it to its full extent and to try to get those students, to get more students involved because we are limited on electives at BAZ because we just, you know, our, our capacity to have different, we don't have labs and all those kinds of things. So, so yes, we do provide transportation.
And then you do have a couple of CIS classes at BAZ that you offer still.
We, we have one CIS class. It goes two quarters to equate to the whole year of, of coursework, but we do have one CIS class, correct?
I know I've, I've heard from students at home that they've often looked at that class and they're like, oh, if only it were offered.
Right. And we do put avid tutors into that class because we do not have the avid elective course at BAZ, but we are a school-wide avid school. So we do have avid tutors in our CIS class to support those students as well.
Awesome, thank you. And Director Funston, the Realtor Summit? Um, I'm assuming that's not our, our sole contact with Realtors. We're, we're doing more than, than simply the summit.
We're starting off with the Summit Director Alt, but we recognize that our Realtors are true advocates for our school district and the community. And so they will be also part of the Burnsville Family Fest. And so all of the ways that we can engage our normal business partners, our business, our Realtors are those business partners as well.
Awesome, thank you. And I don't know who to ask this question to, maybe Assistant Principal Bakair. The affinity group at the high school, do we know, are there similar affinity groups during the school day at middle school?
Director Alt or? Not that I'm aware of. They're different groups with their, where everybody belongs.
Yeah, I'm not aware of affinity groups at the middle school. I know, I can tell you, I can share a long-term dream. A long-term dream is for like the girls and boys that we would, in, they're eleventh and twelfth graders after they've participated for a year, that they could go to the middle schools and help to facilitate affinity groups within the middle schools. And I know that we have had some conversations with the deans and the associate principals at middle schools and very, very interested. We want to tap into the leadership skills of our students. So we're working to get them where we can then create that sort of like process to go back.
Because it seems like middle school. I mean, high school, it's awesome to have that at, at the high school. And it's, I just, it was just a great picture that you painted in terms of the academic pathway as well as, you know, that, that belonging, which, you know, for the longest time, we've talked about wanting our students to feel like they belong and recognizing that how important that is. And just having grownups talking about it isn't the same as actually getting it to happen. So I appreciate that.
Don't leave, I have a question too. Don't leave. No, come back.
No, I just, I wanted to also reiterate how awesome I think affinity groups are. Uh, if I could wave a magic wand for back when I was in high school, I would have loved to have had affinity groups. So I guess I have, are just questions around how they get created. Like what, is there a process that happens as far as who decides, you know, what the affinity group is? You know, what is the process for getting one started? I'm curious about that.
I'm going to ask Dr. Belmont to come up because we have helped, we, we have some that are in creation. So he can share.
Okay.
Part is, I'll let him share of, of one that was created, but part of it's organic. So I, I'm going to be honest, I, I am a, a Black Latina woman. So the groups I decided that I would start would be as a, a Black. I, I do have Black Girl Magic and we have a SOMOS, which is a Latina girls' group. So I have those two affinity groups. Now, um, Proud just came about because Ms. Malay and I were in the hallway and she's the staff, the after-school staff supporter for it. And I said, wow, I see you only have a couple of students who show up to the meeting. Wouldn't it be great if we could create a, a space for the students that wasn't after-school? And she said, yes, I would, would love to do that. So it was, you have to, also have to have willingness of a staff person who wants to run the group. And I think Dr. Belmont can explain about our Latino, Latina academic group.
Yes, so, so one rule is your, you may identify in multiple affinity spaces, but you're only in one during the school day. So, and that's because of our instruction, expectations too. So students rotate, for example, like I help lead our Sodow, which is Somali affinity group. And so we'll meet period one, one week, period two, the next week, period three, so that they're not missing too much core instruction. And then like Ms. Bakair, it really, we do have to blow up some of our reference structures as far as like who's a leader, right? So like for, um, for Alma, one of our Latino, um, our ninth, we have a ninth grader that is, is the captain of that group. And so it's not like this, like this deal where you have to be a certain age. You know, a seventeen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old can have equal amounts of leadership wisdom. So a lot of it is organic. We have a circle model, we have an identified space. Sometimes those spaces are, we're getting challenged because one week we'll have nine and then sixteen and then twenty-eight because students are inviting each other into those spaces, so.
And I think, and, and I would say like all the groups we're saying, you know, we also are talking about, because affinity can be beyond just, um, just race or, or, it's how you come together. So I, this goes along with, 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 um, with what Dr. Funston was talking about with the teacher pathways. So we are talking about, we have a future teacher of America's Club that's after-school. We have, we don't have a lot of students who come to that after-school meeting and space. We've started to have conversations of, let's turn that into an affinity space that happens once a month during the school day. Because if we do that, we know we start to change the student, we start to have more diversity. We change the, the makeup of that group and who begins to participate in that group and see the options that are available. So we're also, we're thinking, I like people to think of, you need to think of affinity wider. It's easier to just go, oh, you're like brown, you can lead them. But we have other, there's other affinity groups and spaces we have. And so I know that is one that we are working our way through, figuring out how can we support that within the building? Because we know that will support many of the, our pathway that we have in place that we want students to take advantage of.
So I'd just add one more thing to what Ms. Bakair shared is just the power of that circle format. We have a, we happen to have an excellent teacher, Lane Bell, who is circle certified, who's bringing that framework into these spaces. And, um, the conditions that are shared at the beginning are honored by students, the talking. Students are expected to, um, so imagine a space where forty, um, forty teenagers are engaged in authentic dialogue and they never have their phones out the entire time. So that, that is what's happening in those spaces.
Unbelievable.
And students want to be, they have such an appetite to be in that space that they are, they're creating the benefits.
Amaria can agree, we, we keep our phones away the whole time.
That says a lot.
Yes, I just think this is such an awesome idea, the affinity group. And like Director Alt said, to start, possibly start that in the junior high level would be so good because those kids need that leadership and to have the high school students mentor it. Just think it's an awesome idea. I'm so happy and thrilled about that. Just wanted to add that.
This is exciting to hear from our board because we are, we are only in the place we're in because we've had tremendous support from Dr. Battle and the entire executive leadership team, CSO and, and our building level. And a shout out to our teachers too, who are providing the space for our students because they know that it will lead to better academic results and learning results in the long run. And we're already seeing evidence of that.
And I, I wanted to, that shout out to the teachers because it is, we, it is one day a week that you're out of class and our teachers at VHS have been nothing but supportive of it. They have told students, I've had students tell me, the teachers have told them, I know today is your group. It's okay, you can go to your group. Even if there's a quiz, I will figure out another time for you. You can stay and take the quiz if you want, or you can go to your group if you need to do that and I will work with you for a time. And that is a testament to all of the work that we have been doing as a district.
I have to say that I just love the fact that we're adding more student voice in terms of the direction and, and steering because I find that when you have that active involvement, the student stays actively involved in the process because they were heard. Um, and so I really, really appreciate and value that we have that as part of our movement forward with our students. And I just, I'm very, love the pathways and our active engagement to make our students college and career ready. I'm a first-generation college graduate. So it's nice to have, knowing that that support of how to go through the process is there for our students.
And like Director Warb said, I'm, I'm kind of jealous that they didn't have that back when I was in high school.
I know.
What a difference it would have made. Thank you, it's wonderful, thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Now we'll move on to our information portion of our meeting and we'll bring Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Dr. Kathy Funston, Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways, back to put a report on PK-12 pathways update.
For most of my career, the board reports that I present have always had to come after really powerful student. You go for it. So, um, members of the board, Superintendent Battle, Chair Chester, I think Dr. Funston and I are really excited to be able to share with you tonight some of the highlights of the progress that has been made with the implementation and the continuation of our pre-K-12 pathways. And it's, it's, uh, it's really an honor to be able to, um, to share some of these things. And it will, you'll have the opportunity to see some student work as well. In two thousand twenty, the, uh, the board endorsed the move to move forward with the developing of the K-8 pathway schools and did so with the intent of creating that equitable access to advanced learning, to science, technology, engineering, math, or STEM programming, and arts education for every student regardless of the building in which they attended. Pathway schools also provide that pre-K-12 journey of college and career exploration and readiness. So the joy that, that I know I felt listening to the BAZ students talk about their exploration toward college and career and listening to the students from VHS sharing, you know, those same types of connections to the pathways and being able to create that as a coherent journey for all of our students, um, across the board is very, very exciting. There has been, so we'll take a look at each level a little bit. Just so that you know, at elementary, we are looking at sparking that curiosity and that wonder. And there has been significant planning and implementation at the K-5 level in fine arts, in math, in engineering, in coding, and in advanced learning. So there's a few bullets here, we'll kind of share some of the highlights of each of these programs as well. So one big highlight for me is the rollout of instrumental music for, at the, um, an exploration for every fifth grader. Knowing that, uh, making sure that every single student was involved in instrumental music as an exploration was very exciting. And the music team really came together, put together a schedule, put together a fleet of instruments and so that each student, every single fifth grader, gets the opportunity to explore two instruments, hands-on exploration in small groups. One is a band instrument and one is a stringed instrument. And that experience they do in small groups. And it's not necessarily individualized lessons. Students are not proficient or on the road to proficiency for any of the instruments, but they do get the opportunity to know what it feels like to hold an instrument, to play simple music on that instrument and try it out in a different way. So that when they move forward to that transition to middle school, they are able to have those discussions and, um, share that with their families about the opportunity to be, participate in instrumental music at the middle school. Also, when we take a look at advanced learning, we have, we took advantage of some of the things that we learned during the pandemic and distance learning. And we now, our advanced learning specialists use the distance learning model to provide advanced math instruction to fourth and fifth grade students during the regular school day. The students meet daily for their math instruction block across the district online. And the math, and so that efficiency allows our advanced learning specialist to be able to offer this advanced math class to sixty-five to seventy-five students in each grade level. And it's, it's just really been an, an exciting enrichment opportunity for so many students. And I have to give credit to the staff in the buildings, the teachers and the principals for making sure that there were spaces available for students and supervision for the students to, and they built their master schedules around this as the center so that all students at all sites would have the opportunity. Elementary advanced learning specialists have also been meeting with students during the win time, the what I need time. And students whose what I need is enrichment and extension are able to participate in pathways-inspired learning. Each grade level is aligned to one of the four high school pathways and do an in-depth project, which they design during the win time. So in grade two, it is about the arts and communications pathway. And all the second grader students in the group create their own storybook. One story, as you can see, this gentleman's Alex's story is how the turtle got its spots. They must create the story with no words and then they create the story with words. So each student has a published, uh, two versions of the same story. Grade three is engineering and design. Students design their own engineering project and then they get to bring it to life and actually create it. In fourth grade, they're aligned to the entrepreneurship and the business, uh, pathway. And fourth grade students create their own business plans and present them in a shark tank environment. So these gentlemen are sharing their cuddles corporation. They have a business plan and they must put together a, a presentation. In grade five, they are aligned to the health and wellness pathway. And what they will, what each group then is asked to do is to create a public service announcement, which I'd like to share with you today. Whoops. Whoops. Yes, please. Okay, but push it anyway.
Look at all of these great, fresh fruits and vegetables.
Sadly, a lot is wasted.
In fact, about 206 billion pounds of food made is wasted each year.
Which is a big problem.
And it needs to be solved immediately.
So, you should reduce, reuse, or recycle the food.
Composting is, is an example of that.
So is giving food that you aren't going to eat to a food shelf or someone you know.
But just buying the things that you need or taking less at dinner so you don't throw food away.
Also, you should eat food that goes bad quickly first.
So you can, but you can also freeze large quantities of meat until you need it.
Meat will not rot in the freezer, so it's a win-win.
And that pretty much sums it up.
The advanced learning specialists are providing students with the opportunity to do authentic work, and for students to be able to have, to be able to share their choice and their voice in the projects that they, in which they participate. At the middle school, we really want to, it's the fuel exploration and find inspiration, really looking at the school-wide emphasis for Avid, and looking not only, what you see here is Avid students participating in tutorials in which students lead their own peers in support for academic questions and support, but also the relational curriculum in Avid is, permeates through the building, and Avid is very much focused on creating relationships and community. And so that becomes part of the core curriculum in the Avid elective, but it also then, as we do Avid schoolwide, becomes the activities and the strategies that are used in every classroom. In middle school as well, is looking at that belonging, and on our road to creating environments where students feel like they belong. Eighth grade students are identified as web leaders, where everyone belongs. They are trained in, in leadership training and to, to conduct orientation for the rising sixth graders. So as sixth graders enter into and do the orientation, it is the web leaders, the students, who conduct the orientation and bring those students through their practice school day, answer questions, give them the information that they need, and talk to them in that authentic voice way. And so it creates that leadership within some of our eighth graders that then they can take forward as they move into the high school. In middle school, we also are looking at amplify, the Amplify Science curriculum. This is the first full year of implementation of that curriculum, which represents the next generation science standards. The difference with this, in this next generation science standards is it encourages students to think like a scientist. It is phenomena-based, so instead of giving instruction and then letting students do the experiments, students observe a phenomenon, record the data, and then as they study the foundational concepts or ideas, they are able to make, to create answers to questions that they have created. And that's the think like a scientist kind of focus. And so we did invest in some hands-on and laboratory items for our students in the middle school, to, to extend that. We also are looking at this year being the, being as we get to actually in, use block instruction, since all students are back at full-time. And during the block instruction in reading and in math, students also have the regular class period, but then embedded within that is the what I need time. During the what I need time, it can be an extension, is for students, but students can be grouped beyond the core instruction based on what they might need for that particular day, that week, that unit. And what happens during that time could be intervention, it could be personalized, personalization, which might use some of our online tools that students can practice and extend, as well as the enrichment and the extension.
Yes, I'll be happy to.
Do you want to talk about our rain and pollinator, pollinator gardens?
Certainly. We were very fortunate, our partners at BOSH, we received a BOSH Community Fund grant, and with that, we started collaborating with our two middle schools, and as Director Oftedal mentioned, these next generation science standards in the seventh grade, the rain and pollinator garden concept evolved around what those science standards are. And so this grant launched the idea around a rain and pollinator garden. Since then, we have been partnering with our Dakota and Scott County Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and they are going to be able to bring an additional $30,000 to the project. And so our smallish rain and pollinator garden is now becoming a much larger rain and pollinator garden with a lot of new learning opportunities. There's a lot of STEM involved with this because it is the engineering design when you're talking about creating a rain garden. The city of Burnsville, the Department of Natural Resources is, is involved in this project as well, and the BOSH Community Fund is so excited about not only our idea, but also that we've been able to bring aboard new partners who are also bringing aboard additional funding. They are going to support us next year as well with an additional grant to continue the development of these rain and pollinator gardens. A green team is also being formed at each of the middle schools, and our high school green team advisors are working with our middle school folks in the development of a green team for the middle schools.
Pictures of the students as they are working in the Amplify Science curriculum. And so when we, when we look at the pathways that we are beginning to put into place for K-8, we know that getting them to high school where they can blaze their trail and really commit to the pathway that, that seems to, to focus the best for them. So, Director Funston?
So even though the last two years have been challenging in so many aspects, there are a lot of innovative, creative, and exciting opportunities that are happening at the high school for our pathways. In the arts, global communication, and IT, we are partnering with Darty Business Solutions and the St. Louis Community College. We have the, our students can take Java 1 and Java 2 online synchronously with the students at St. Louis Community College, free college. After they finish, this is for seniors, after they finish and they graduate, they will have an internship from Darty Business Solutions. And if they are successful in that internship, they will be hired by a local partnering business. And when we first launched this project, the starting salary for our 18-year-olds who have finished Java 1 and Java 2 was $45,000. That has now jumped to $60,000. So this is an excellent opportunity for those students who want to pursue this, and all of the businesses who will hire our students in these positions guarantee tuition reimbursement so our students can continue their college education. In design, engineering, and manufacturing, we are launching our Youth Skills Training Grant from the Department of Labor and Industry, and what that grant is enabling us to do is to certify our automotive program through ASE certification, which is industry certification. Through that also, Walzer has been an incredible partner with us through many years of our automotive program, and they will be providing paid internships for our students in the automotive industry. And this is for the, at least the next two years, but Walzer has always paid our students to do internships with them, so this, this was just a natural. In our construction program, we had a great donation from Northern Tool, who is in our backyard in Burnsville, and we were able to upgrade several pieces of the equipment in there so that our students are using industry-level equipment while they are doing some of their construction projects. And the cross-collaboration with the tech programs and business, I want to come back to that when I talk a little bit with business, because I have something that I want to show you that's really exciting. So in our culinary and hospitality, the Byda Burnsville, I don't know if any of you were able to attend the Byda Burnsville, Dr. Battle did, and so the Burnsville Chamber is partnering with, with us, and all of the businesses agreed that they would like to sponsor our culinary program, so 10% of the proceeds from Byda Burnsville will be coming back to the culinary program at the high school. And then with our business and entrepreneur, and it was so great listening to Amaria talk about starting your own business. So the wonderful thing about pathways is it's not just a singular pathway for a student, but it's a way for our instructors also to cross-collaborate with their content to really provide the richness of experience for our students. So in our business department, where we have a starting your own business course, students are creating a product. They then decided, you know what, we've got all of this incredible equipment right next door in the fab lab, let's get the students, our, our peers in the fab lab to make the stuff that we want to create. And then they decided, you know what, we really do want to sell this. So how are we going to do that? Well, they decided that a pop-up kiosk would be the easiest way and best way for point of sale at Burnsville High School of the product that they're creating, designing, manufacturing, and then they want to sell. And so this is one, they've got a lot, but I brought this one. This is a, this is probably about the fourth or fifth prototype of their product, and it's very simple, you can see it just kind of this, and this is 3D printed at Burnsville High School, and they kept going back, refining the design, refining the design, refining the design. So eventually, and of course, look at these wonderful colors. You've got a design here, this is for... Your cellphone. A cellphone holder. And the great thing about this, it is much smaller than what is available online to purchase right now. The students decided, you know what, we need to add a loop for a carabiner so we can just attach it to a backpack, and so they will be very soon selling these. Right now, they're still working on the kiosk for the, the point of sale, and so our construction students will be building those kiosks, and I'm certain that they will be in similar colors throughout the school so that our students can, can sell their product. And then also the, the business incubator. And so in our former Firefly space, we had a wonderful partnership with Firefly, and Firefly merged, or actually TruStone took over Firefly. And so this was during the pandemic, and during their merger, they still partner with us in our business department, offering financial assistance, the credit cards, the accounts for our students, and those kinds of things, but their direction shifted slightly, which did not include the student-run credit union. And so we started thinking, well, what can we do with this space? It's a wonderful space, it needs to be used for students. And our first idea was a, more of a pop-up coffee shop, because just like the adults, our students often will come to school with coffee as well, and we've got a fantastic culinary program. Our challenge there is that in that space, there was not the plumbing that would be needed for, you know, the Department of Health requirements for that. So we had to say, okay, we can't do the, the pop-up coffee shop, we'll just have our culinary students cater things for us. And then we landed on a business incubator, because just like Amaria was talking with her businesses that she's creating, just like these students here creating, there are students who need more time and space than just one class during the day to take their idea to the next level, and we have got incredible, talented, creative kids. And so this business incubator, we have a lot of partners in, in our community, SCORE, which is also housed at the Burnsville Chamber. Their entire job is to assist small business with mentoring and support. And so we have the business community, we have the partners, we have the students with the ideas, we need to give them the space and time to be able to flourish and create those ideas and take them to the next level. So there are several ideas for that space. We're not going to land on one until our students tell us what that space really needs to look like and how it can function best for them. And our business department is very excited about the possibility of this, and so are our business partners, who are more than willing to come in and help our, our students. In the health and human services, we have, of course, our Certified Nursing Assistant Program. We're fortunate that this year, we're going to be able to get state funding for the CNA exam, and then also our partnerships with Ebenezer Ridges, our nursing home partner, and we've, we've partnered for several years now with the Burnsville Fire Department, and we are now also partnering with the Savage Fire Department. And these are primarily for not only demonstrations in class, but also for the ride-alongs, which are required for students to be able to get their EMT. And then our education pathway, we are really excited about a partnership with Metropolitan State, it's the Urban Education Program, and this will begin next year. We're very fortunate that we're going to be able to support students, many students, up to 50 students, with scholarships over the next five years who enroll in a teacher preparation program at Metropolitan State University. And this, this program is not solely for, but definitely is, is looking to increase the number of students of color who choose to go into education. We need, we need to do something to increase the teachers of color who are with our students in classes, and so this is a very good way and a first attempt at trying to do that in our own district. So just looking at our enrollment, this is not all of the enrollment. This enrollment, these numbers come from our Perkins data, and Perkins are federal funds that come through the State Department that support primarily our pathway-type classes. These are career and technical education classes. So these numbers are a little more restrictive than if we just looked at our general enrollment data. 71% of our students were enrolled in pathway courses in fiscal year '21. Interestingly enough, we have just about even male, female, or students who identify male or female, enrolled in our, who attend school, and interestingly, they are enrolled just about equally in pathways. 63% of our English learners are participating in pathways, and 66% of our special education students are enrolled in pathways. And then you can see on the slide here where we have our student group, and that enrollment is quite high in all of our student groups.
And with that, hopefully you can see some of the progress that we're making, and just how fortunate it is that you get both presentations on the same night so that you can see those connections. Just seeing those fourth graders doing their mini shark tanks, and knowing that they'll have the opportunity then to move to the high school and work in the, in the business incubator. It's all, it's all part of that comprehensive experience for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open it up for comments, discussion, questions?
I had a comment. So, this is about the fifth grade instrumental thing, which I think is fantastic, I love it. My, I have two kids in the band at the high school, and my observation, I don't have any data to back this up, but my observation from going And my observation, I don't have any data to back this up, but my observation from going to concerts and other performances is that band numbers are down pretty significantly over the last couple of years, which given the pandemic and everything is not too shocking. So I will just say that I am heartened by the fifth grade program and hope that it helps, and am hopeful that it will help us to rebuild our very important band programs at the middle school and high school in the coming years. So thank you for that particular piece of the update.
And I think we're already seeing, when the fifth graders were doing their sixth grade registrations, seeing fairly high numbers, or higher numbers, as we see that resurgence.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Phil?
Two or three. First, and I know I've asked this before, so it's kind of more of a refresh my memory, please. With second and third grade coding curriculum, of course, we continue to enhance what we're doing at the elementary, specifically with coding. How is that playing out at the high school? In terms of the kids coming up with more experience than maybe, like, I don't know what kind of changes are happening at the high school to accommodate the more rigorous learning that's happening at elementary?
Right. So the second and third grade have participated in the Universal Plus Grant from MDE, in which all second and third graders participate in 30 minutes of coding instruction per week in addition to the coding instruction that they receive during their digital learning specialist time. We are, at this point, looking at the curriculum for our middle school electives and looking at increasing the rigor there. What we find is that it is increasing then that exploration for students who would then go on to participate in that arts communication and IT pathways, such as cybersecurity, is that those students come in with that base knowledge of coding and making them more prepared for the high school in many of those courses.
And just a comment on the fourth and fifth grade math, that's awesome, that we've been able to figure that out and kind of get that, you know, that cohesive group going. I'll be curious to hear reports from future years in terms of what this might be doing down the road with, you know, math and rigorous learning for our students, as well as the participants in the math, the more rigorous math courses being more representative of our students. I think this will probably help with that. And then just sitting back and listening to all of, you know, everything that's going on, everything that we've been doing in terms of the grants and our partnerships, and they're so very important to how we're educating and preparing our students for life after school, after graduation. It really does take a village. And then I overlay that with the need for funding from state and from the federal government. And we are doing everything that we can, right? We are really looking everywhere that we can for a partnership, for a grant, that really is going to impact our students' opportunities after they graduate. So kudos to the team for not resting on our laurels. I, at some point, I know we get this periodically, but getting that, you know, the read of all the grants, perhaps the value of the grants on an annual basis, just, you know, probably for the legislative committee might be helpful in terms of, look at what we've brought to the table for our students. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? No? Thank you very much for this presentation, it was a nice addition to what was previously just done.
Yeah. And I just want to say thank you to the board, just my appreciation of working here in District 191 and being able to be involved in such robust programming focused on so many different areas of responding to students' needs. And so, thank you, thank you very much.
Next, we will have a report about updated FY23 budget with Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, and Erin Tinklinberg, Director of Communication.
Thank you, Chair Chester, members of the board. And so tonight was a, it's perfect to follow those first two presentations. Because you see what we have declared as a school district for our student experiences. And now, we're going to give you another update of providing the resources so we can continue those experiences. Previously, in budget updates, I did share that this budget proposal I've given to you does include those priorities, that we are going to continue the work of pre-K-12 pathways. So we begin with an overview for this latest update. We're going to continue our actions to provide the board and community with updated preliminary fiscal year 23 budget development. We will share some revisions to assumptions, our list of adjustment, and the uses of federal funds. At the last board meeting on 3/10, you gave me and staff direction for Budget Scenario 2, and so we'll give you an update on that. Also, recommended uses for our ESAR funds. We also have had some additional stakeholder feedback, and so Erin will share that, and then we'll review next steps. So there have been revisions since March 10. And you see there the assumptions, adjustments, federal funds, as well as our current reality and that recommended scenario after applying the various strategies. And then that summary of feedback and then next steps. So to preview some of the revisions you will see in subsequent slides, we have received from the Minnesota Department of Education what we call the what-if for fiscal year 23 version. Each, after each legislative session, especially a funding year, they send us the initial what-if after the session priorities. And then we receive this update mid-year or a little after, depending on when they can get all the numbers straight. So it did show a decrease in revenues of $152,066. And a direction from the board to find the coins in the couch. We did take another look at inflationary assumptions we made, and that includes insurance and then some others, and that total reduction in expenditures of $650,000. And then we've now revised the current reality, the list of adjustments, and the federal funds, as you know, we have trans, almost transitioned from a pandemic to an endemic. And so we've removed some COVID-19 implementation items we had slated to continue for next year, such as contact tracing. And so we'll give you more information about that. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Executive Director of Business Services, Lisa Ryder.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. We've seen this slide before, it has been updated for the revenues that have been reduced by the $152,066. Additionally then, that changes the variance between the revenues and expenditures that you see. And remember, this is what we call our current reality, should nothing else change, if we were just to go with the assumptions we've made so far. And that does slightly shift the unassigned fund balance down to a 7.01% as well. So as we move to the Scenario 2 and focus on how this now looks, you will see that the revenues here also have been reduced. There is a shift in the amount of dollars that are listed under the ESAR 3 80% relief funds, and I'll explain that in a moment. And the net variance at this time between revenues and expenditures is down to 1.845 million. And the ending fund balance then is slightly higher, the right sizing, I shouldn't say higher so much, in total, the right sizing, the preliminary adjustments and the use of federal funds still allows for an unassigned fund balance. So the portion that is unassigned remained similar to what we had talked about, 14.11. But there is a slight change in all of these numbers. The preliminary adjustments have increased by 706,783, we'll talk about what made that up in a moment. There is no change to the right sizing. And for the use of federal funds, we did increase that by 200,000. As Dr. Battle mentioned, we went through that list, and as we came up with exactly what it was we had identified that needed to be additional, that left a little bit more than available for that which is not additional, and that's why it increased by the 200,000. As we move to the next slide, this link has been updated so that they can, anyone clicking on it can see the full-page version of what it is that we are covering tonight. And the next six slides already break that down. So I will not open the link at this time, but instead we'll just keep moving through the slides. The second link here, just to remind people, that is the Budget Unit Revised FY22 Budget. That helps in case people need to understand what the budget units are, and to just give some reference for that information for people. So this slide on the right sizing, as you take a look at this, there is no change to any of the items that were listed here compared to March 10. And what you will see that's different in the picture here is on the very far right, our percentages that have been added. These percentages were provided to you in workshop on March 10, and so they have been included here as well. The percentages are calculating based upon the budget amount that's listed over to the left divided by the base amount that makes up, you know, where did these reductions come from? All right, as we take a look at the prioritizing pathways, which is 2.1, this slide has no changes, does show the 0% on the far right, but there's no substantive changes here to that item. Our initial budget adjustments, there are three slides now rather than two. And so on this first page, this covers items number 3.1 through 3.12, and there are no adjustments that have been made to this, but you will see again those percentages on the far right-hand side. So if I may, for example, the first one, 3.1, you see an adjustment there for $28,000. That percentage then would reflect 5.18% of the total amount of budget that's under Budget Unit 16060. Okay? Moving to the next slide, these are item numbers 3.13 through 3.18. And on this slide, there are no changes as well, and you see the percentages off on the right-hand side. This last slide for the initial budget adjustments, they are all bold. It's hard to see that when you don't see it compared to the other ones, but these are all modified from the past meeting, March 10. These were added. And so I would like to kind of walk through these, these, this slide here totals 706,783. As you take a look at 3.19, this is in the event that Metcalf Middle School is sold, then there will be a need for us to have a little bit more budget for moving out, things out of that building. And so then there's 3.20, in which, same scenario, should we be selling Metcalf Middle School, you would also then see that we can assume some savings that are related to the costs listed there. This will be dependent upon the sale date. And so I've used just an assumption of a half a year of savings. Under 3.1, I'm going to skip 3.21 for a moment, 3.22 is also related to our Metcalf Middle School property as we did inquire of our casualty, our property casualty insurer to determine exactly what kind of savings that would possibly mean for our premium. And so you see that reflected here as well, proated as well. Under 3.21, going back to it, these are the change in expenditure assumptions. So as you recall, when we first started talking about this, we had taken all of our expenditure items, line items, and we had applied to each of them a certain percentage. In some cases, that percentage was maybe 2%, in other cases, it was 3%. And so as we take a look now at some of our assumptions on some of these expenditures, we know more now than we knew back then because of the timing of where we're at with, you know, just that process of setting things up for the new year and identifying what the increase is going to be. And so based on those assumptions, we've learned, you know, different percentages have actually increased, and in some cases, the majority which have decreased here. So we're looking at a $650,000 change in our assumptions that does decrease the amount of expenditures. And as you can see over to the far right, you can see the percentage that really applies to, so you can get a sense of what that looks like in the whole picture. For item number 3.23 and 3.24, these are both related to technology. This shows a shift of dollars being utilized for clerical position in support of the tech levy, and that is a 1.0 FTE under Budget Unit 14020, and at the same time, a reduction then for where we otherwise were showing that budget, which was in equipment. 3.25 is, this reflects the net increase in our Budget Unit 16010. This is mostly where our election information, our dollar budgets are for elections. And so in talking through our timelines, there is a possibility that the school board may choose to run a election for renewal of our capital projects levy. And should that happen in November of 2023, then you will likely be interested in a survey that would take place in the spring of '23 and require some additional budget for that purpose. Not knowing for certain if those things will all take place, it's an item that we have added to this list, and it is in addition to the budget of 10,000. As we move to the next slide, we are now at 4.1, which is the federal funding for current expenditures. And so that 3.4 million is up 200,000 from where we had assumed at the March 10 meeting. We're going to now move away from the initial budget adjustments, and we are going to now speak to the, these are the additional budget items that were listed under the ESAR 3 80% first is this slide. And on this, you will also again see things in bold if it was modified. And you will also see an asterisk if there is something that is still being vetted. Okay? And so as you take a look at those things, I won't go through all of them that you see in bold necessarily, we'll talk about the ones that are added. Because as Dr. Battle mentioned, the ones that are removed are basically based on the review of whether or not we truly feel we're going to need them next year. So as we get to E80.18, that is eight positions at the elementary level for Level 3 EA, for a total of 450,000. And E8.19 is an additional 1.0 FTE with clerical support for the administration of federal relief funds. As we move to the next slide, this is still the ESAR 3, but now we're shifting to the 20% portion of the grant. And so here again, you'll see in bold those items that have been added. And so we have our E20.12, which is our summer school training for BAR. We did do that training last year, we just feel we need to revisit that again with new folks and make sure that people are well-trained in that area as we move into our summer school. E20.13 is inclusion, is an inclusion playground for early childhood special ed and early childhood family education students here at Diamond Head. And this, you see, there is an asterisk, so there again, it still means it's still being vetted, and an estimate there of $150,000. The next line is E20.14, which is our out-of-school-time coordinator. Out-of-school-time refers to the dollars that are the 20% ESAR 3 funds, they have to be outside of the school day, outside of the school year. And this coordinator would then do the planning, the staffing, the implementation, and the follow-up, wrap-up of that grant for all of those activities. And that is listed at 140,000. I think that covers all the E20, the E5.1 does not change, that was the same as it was previously. All right, then as we move to the next slide, Erin Tinklinberg will speak to our feedback we've received. And I will move over, Erin.
Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, and members of the board, thank you. This has just been updated to reflect the new timeline, as we did have to move one of our meetings, the parent engagement meeting, and we did keep the online forum for budget feedback open for a little more than an extra week, all the way to March 16. We did get a few more responses to that online survey after the parent meeting and in the ensuing time about 12:00. We did get a few more responses to that online survey after the parent meeting and in the ensuing time, about 12 more responses. Most of them were similar to what we had heard before, so most of what's on this slide is not new. There was a couple of comments about concern over cutting the P-card and financial support and about the virtual academy not having, the potential for virtual academy not having its own separate principal. On the positive side, or there was again, support for the middle school athletics and prioritizing mental health and services like cultural liaisons. And somebody did put in a question just about whether it would be possible to make sure that, for instance, the top-level pathways classes, I assume they mean things like culinary three, the ones that lead to certification, that those happen even if they're, even when there is low enrollment. And then on March 15th, we did hold the parent meeting here at Diamond Head, which had been rescheduled from March 8th. We had about 10 parents attend along with several children, which was wonderful, actually. And primarily, the responses that we got at that time were that the middle school addition, or the addition of middle school sports was positive. Many of the parents were part of a group advocating for the addition of wrestling to those, to that middle school sports proposal. And we did have a couple of parents come in also and advocate for adding tennis to middle school sports and additional homework help, especially at the high school. And that was about it. So it was actually a really nice meeting. Parents were really positive and supportive and great in advocating for what they were looking for. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Lisa.
So our, our timeline then, as we continue forward, is that we anticipate tonight to be our last discussion with regard to some of the assumptions that we've been making. And then upon moving forward into the month of April and May, we would be working on the line item budgets, much of which is about determining the staffing at each of the different locations, different positions being filled. And from there, also gathering the other information that is non-staffing and pulling that all together for a presentation to the board on June 9th for the proposed adopted FY '23 budget and asking for board approval at the June 16th meeting. This would then satisfy the statutory deadline for approval of adopted budget by June 30th.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Our members, any comments, questions at this moment? Seeing none, we will move on to board committee reports, updates, and board appointments and school assignment reports. Let's start with negotiations.
No report, report from negotiations at this time.
Policy committee?
We, the policy committee met and we don't have to, we met, we ran through the policies. I won't mention every one. And Dr. Battle, I think we'll be reporting on some of those later during our workshop.
Legislative?
That completes our report.
Okay. Legislative committee?
Yeah, the legislative committee had a very short meeting on Tuesday, March 22nd. We had one agenda item, which was an update on the legislative exemption, which is still working its way through the House and the Senate. The good news is it is still moving forward, and we are still very hopeful that it will get passed this year. One thing that is new that came up, and Director Ryder and Dr. Battle, help me out if I, if, if people have questions that I'm not able to answer. But in the hopefully unlikely event that it does not pass this year, there might still be options for us for next year. One thing that some districts have done in the past is they've been able to get kind of a subsequent legislative exemption approved in similar types of situations where they were able to move the money, the funds from this, from the capital account to the general fund after. So that's an option that we may, may be able to explore if it doesn't go through this year. I see Lisa and Dr. Battle nodding their heads, so I guess I said it correctly. If that is all, then that concludes my report for this evening.
Wonderful. Other board appointment reports. Director Connor?
I have one from the Board of, Chamber of Commerce. My policy meeting with them, they just had a legislative meeting on February, I'm sorry. They had a legislative meeting and they actually had two meetings that month. And one of them was the impact of redistrict, redistricting. And then they had, they just talked about the DFL raising taxes for six years to fix our unemployment. And then the tax decrease and how that's going to become an income, how it's going to affect income, which will be less. And then, let's see. Oh, and then just what Governor Walz wants to do to put money back into the unemployment with our state surplus. And there, that kind of goes back to my, my next report. They are legislating that, that money be put more into the school system, education bill or education proposal and then a bill. That concludes my one for the chamber. I have a few for two meetings that we had for MSDA in March, one on March 4th, and we had one on the 18th. Just a few items to bring to note. We had Representative Heather Edelson, was her name. And her main concern, they were just talking about the needs of our school district and the school board, but mostly just our school community, our whole education system. And her main concern was on special, special needs for special education because she herself, and she just announced this to everybody, was dyslexic. So that's just one of her passions. And then we had Senator Zach Duckworth, he spoke, and his special concern for education is in literacy. And so the things that they're working on in the legislative area for schools is funds for the school. The bills that they want to propose are literacy, cross subsidy, subsidy, special, special aids, and also obtaining teachers of color, a lot of that you probably already know, but just running through the top subjects they talked about in the meeting. Recruiting substitute teachers and requirement for licensure and putting that out into a bill. They talked about inflation, but there's no bill or funds for that. They wanted to talk, they wanted to propose parents at listening sessions that they don't have to give out their addresses. They were concerned about giving that out to speak at the listening session. And parents want to get curriculum of what teachers are teaching. They want a parents' bill of rights. And they want to modernize, modernize online learning, which I think we've already, are doing a good job with that. I can't even talk tonight. Prioritize mental health resources. And let's see, oh, then they have, they want people to write in with ideas for school, for our school harassment policy and code of conduct for sports teams and students, which in their following meeting on March 18th, they did also talk about. They just wanted to let people know the redistrict, redistricting that I mentioned earlier. 53 districts have changed in 64 cities. And that a lot of people are retiring from the Senate and this, the House and the Senate. And then on the March 18th meeting, student engagement and listening sessions were the main focus. And they were just talking about the behavior of students. And they're looking for ideas or listening sessions for students, which we heard tonight, which just falls right into place, which was great. But also the, the conduct and who should be responsible besides the coaches for student conduct in sports. And they propose that coaches have 60 hours of training and also training for education in religion, gender identity, racial sensitivity. And, oh, and expectations on policies for drugs that affect student behavior. They want to have a student code of conduct with clear expectations and consequences. They want to make this a proposal. And that is, oh, and then just that, what we already know, they want to subsidize student education funding, student mental health and prioritize personalized learning and increase the diversity of the educated workforce. So those, those are the things we talked about in the meeting and their proposals for bills. And that concludes my report on the ASMA D board.
Thank you, Director Connor. Other assignment reports. I'll do a quick report on 9/17. We had Dr. Favor here at our meeting just earlier this month. And so we had a nice update about everything going on in 9/17. The board at our board meeting the week prior had approved the new mission, vision, and values. And so what's next steps is a more completed strategic plan that will be coming after another couple workshops with the board. So that's my report for 9/17. Great. Well? Oh, you have one more.
I just have one other thing to add for the chamber, just in case anyone is listening from the Chamber of Commerce. They also were very avid in letting, for me advocating to let the board know that they stand behind us and they are very interested in being supportive to anything that we need. And they had a few ideas, and I passed that on to Dr. Battle, and she will be addressing those. So they are very interested in being supportive to the school board.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the business portion of our meeting. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item that will be removed for separate consideration. Is there any? Do more, do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director, oh?
Second.
Second by Director Sead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to new business. We will have Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology, to bring forward a recommendation to approve Chromebook purchase.
Good evening, Board Chair Chester, Board members, and Superintendent Battle. This evening, I'm bringing forward a request for approval for our annual Chromebook purchase. Each spring, we identify the needed student Chromebooks for the following fall. The recommendation for FY '23 is to purchase 1700 Acer Chromebooks, the licenses that are needed, and services that will replace the oldest models in our inventory. The recommendation for the 1700 reflects a reduced number than in previous years and is possible because of the additional Chromebooks that we added into our inventory over to handle the higher needs in the COVID pandemic. Quotes utilizing a collective purchasing agreement were requested from multiple vendors. And CDWG's quote utilized the Sourcewell contract 071321, and it was the lowest bid by $142,000. This quote includes Chromebooks, required Chrome licenses, and white glove configuration. And that includes the OS or operating system upgrades to make sure that they are as up-to-date as they can be. It includes enrolling the devices into our Google management system, booting and testing to make sure all of our devices are ready to go right, right as we hand them out, and applying district, district asset tags and green packaging, which ensures that we can efficiently hand them out in the fall to our students. The total cost of this purchase is $632,400, and it will utilize our FY '23 technology levy funds. It is recommended that the contract be approved with CDWG for the Chromebooks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Webb. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This concludes our regular scheduled meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn to a board workshop for our workshop topics? Moved by Director Connor?
Second.
Second by Director Hume. We are adjourned, we will, what? All those in favor? Say aye. So we will take a 10-minute break. Begin our workshop, and we'll start with the baseball boosters proposal recommendation. We have Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, Dave Helkey, Principal of Burnsville High School, Mick Scholl, Baseball Coach, Eric Royce, Softball Coach, and Sarah Sansala, Attorney with Kennedy and Graven.
So thank you, Chair Chester. So tonight, Principal Helkey and I are bringing forward details about our support for a facilities upgrade. And so tonight, for overview, we're going to share through several months of vetting some of the highlights and benefits. We're going to review the project scope and costs. We will share baseball and softball program highlights, project history, as I said, it's been several months, and implications of that vetting. So there are several areas from legal to policy that we reviewed every part of the proposal. And then we will review some legal documents and then share next steps. And so with that, that overview, we have associated agenda items that you see before you. So I'm going to invite Principal Dave Helkey to share some of the highlights and benefits of why we are supportive of this project.
Good evening, Chair Chester, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Battle. It's exciting to be a part of this presentation this evening. This is going to be a great opportunity for the high school. And please remember, I am pinch hitting tonight for our athletic director, Guillaume Pack. So I do have the experts here with me. But I'm going to talk a little bit just about what this project would mean to the high school and then some background information. And so first of all, the first two, you know, really go together. So bringing the varsity baseball field back on campus instead of an offsite location really goes a long way in terms of removing barriers that create, and by doing that, we're going to create more equitable opportunities for our students. The next bullet talks about state-of-the-art facilities for our softball and baseball programs. I think we all know that curb appeal, that what people see on a campus, around a campus, I think when people look at the athletic facilities of a high school, that goes a long way in decisions that people make in terms of whether they would like to be a part of that school community or not. And so just having the opportunity to have a facility where the field dimensions are official, where there's appropriate fencing, there's scoreboards that are modern and updated, fully augmented. And then the turf piece just adds to the duration and the length of the field use during the course of the year. And then lights actually adds to the, obviously, the times and the amount of use that the field can have. And we all know that sports transcends just the school community. And so by providing facilities, it's more than just our baseball and softball teams. It really is about a community transformation and something to be proud of as a community. Whoops.
Skip the one, two.
I did.
Go back one more.
So I'll do the arrow here. There we go. Benefits, I did allude to that first one, just the improving the campus. And again, for families, for students, when they're looking at high schools, the facilities and our athletic facilities are a determining factor for many families. And so it is a way to look at attracting and retaining students. By bringing the field back onto campus, again, that equitable piece, it provides opportunities to really increase participation in baseball and softball, especially for our BIPOC students. The other thing is just having the field and having it available to use more from a community standpoint also will provide opportunities to bring in more youth and get excitement for baseball and softball. Coach Scholl and Coach Ruse are going to talk in a bit about the highlights of both their programs. Burnsville High School has a rich history with their baseball and softball programs and a lot to be proud of. And this is just one way of supporting that and enhancing programmatically what they can do. It, again, as well, increases visibility for one ninety-one state-of-the-art facilities, you know, and really will bring us up to, you know, a school in a school district that has not only a turf football field and stadium, but the turf baseball and softball fields. And then the last point is really important again, and it goes along with just the turf, allowing the use of the fields to be greater also provides a lot of opportunities for the fields to be rented. And so there's that potential to capture future revenue from rentals of the fields. And we all know that athletic facilities, there's a lot of demand for those facilities. And so that helps us compete with other neighboring communities, other neighboring districts that may have similar facilities and, again, bring in some future revenue for the district. The next slide speaks to the scope of the proposed project. And I think what's important on this slide is to really look at from the right to the left, three options that are indicated there. And not only just looking under each option, and we'll go through what is part of each option, but then obviously the cost that would be associated with each option. And so in any good project proposal, you're going to want to take a look at, for this, we can do this, and kind of go up to that top version. And so on the right, I'm going to start and go to the left, is the first option, the single option, talks about two partially turfed fields, fences, scoreboards, and bullpens. And that's for two million dollars. And then as you move to the left, the double option, the partially turf fields go to complete turf fields, the fences add backstops, scoreboard still exists, and then the bullpens really expand to dugout grandstand and bullpens. And that increases the cost to two point eight million. And then the home run option, again, two complete turf fields, lighting is added to the fields, and then all the other things that we've talked about are still at play. And that home run option would cost three point five million. And so this slide is just a nice layout of the proposed project and the scope of the project depending upon the funds that are available. I did talk about the program and the rich history, and I'm going to actually turn it over to Coach Scholl and then Coach Ruse to just talk and share a little bit about the highlights of their programs.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, just so we have this opportunity to propose this to you. This has been in the making for almost a little over three years to get to this point. And Dr. Battle also, I appreciate this opportunity. Our baseball, like Mr. Helkey has said, has a long tradition of it, and you can see a long tradition throughout our program and this school district. We've put Burnsville on the map. When they talk across the state about baseball in high school, they talk about Burnsville. And so it helps our community and it also helps our school get recognized. And it's all about these kids. And these kids are the ones that need the recognition. Some of the things off the field, you can see some of those bullet points, you know, those eight straight years of our team GPA of three point five, and does it as an all-state. So we're doing it in the classroom also. We've got two years back-to-back of a gold level, which is the best in the state for GPA for a school of our size. We've had twenty-two individuals named academic all-state. Players volunteer for free clinics and youth baseball. So we do community work with the kids. In just the past two years, we've done clinics for East African kids and also our Latino population. We work with the community through that, and our kids volunteer to put on those clinics. And we've actually increased our population in the baseball community because of those clinics. Our annual community recognition events, what that means is every year, we try to pick out a day that we honor somebody in our community. And from VAC to our veterans, also our first responders, and I can go into more of that too. Another bullet point off the field is that we have twenty-five former players who have come back and coached in our program. We currently have three right now. Last year, we had five. And I think that's, and I think that says something about our program, too, that kids want to come back here and then be part of it. Off the field, we have, you know, we've, we won the state tournament in two thousand eleven. We're runners-up in two thousand ten, but we got it in two thousand eleven. Last ten years, we've been in the state tournament four times. Fourteen of the last seventeen years, we've been ranked in the top twenty in the state. And again, this is all recognition in the papers and everything else about Burnsville High School. Five times have been ranked number one in the entire state. We have four All-Americans that have come out of Burnsville. We have two Gatorade Players of the Year. Twenty-seven of our grads have gone on to play Division One college baseball and twenty-one since two thousand eight. We have ten grads drafted in professional baseball or played professional baseball, true drafted right out of Burnsville High School. We currently have two playing right now, one in Seattle Mariners and one with Minnesota Twins. And again, we have a longstanding of excellence, as you can see, both on and off the field. It's not just about the athletics. It's about making these young men and training these young men and creating these athletes and young men into bettering our community also. Thank you.
Awesome. As Coach Scholl said and Mr. Helkey, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight to you for our proposal. It's kind of, listening to Coach Scholl talk, I was a part of his program for many, many years. I took over the softball program four years ago. So all those accomplishments, it's great to see those again, and it makes a full circle for me, having a great mentor in Mick Scholl and what he's done for the athletes of Burnsville throughout the years has been great. And taking that to the softball side of it, we have that same tradition in softball over the last many years. And I'm honored to continue that tradition at Burnsville High School softball. So a lot of these stats are from the coaches previously to me, Pat Feely and Rachel. Eighteen Division One athletes we've had in softball, three state tournaments. I believe in two thousand and ten was their championship year, right before we won in two thousand and eleven, and one consolation championship. The four years that I've taken over, our grade point average has been, I think, three-eight or higher the last four years. And over the last ten, fifteen years, it's been three point seven five or higher. We really take pride in, as academics come first, in teaching the skills, not only on the field and off the field, and softball. We've had academic all-state for seniors year after year, and then we take pride also, it's more than the game with softball. Tonight, we did a, we did a community service event, My Very Own Bed. We made eleven blankets, tie blankets, to give to that organization tonight. So we took time off from practice tonight and did that to give back to the community a little bit. So we talked about that pride and, again, the life lessons that can be learned on and off the field in the game of softball and the game of baseball. Very excited for this opportunity. You know, like I said earlier, coaching with Scholl for many years, we have a lot of dreams together. And for this to possibly have an opportunity to come true, it's great. And like Mick said it earlier, it's about these kids. These kids do great things to be a part of the program, to be a part of their lives and trying to mentoring them and being that part where we can kind of guide them in the right way to make great decisions in their lifelong journeys ahead of them. It's special. It's great to be called coach, it's great to be called teacher, and we were honored to be able to do both those things on the baseball and softball field. So thanks for having us.
Well, thank you, Coach Scholl, and thank you, Coach Ruse, for sharing the excellent history and tradition of your programs.
So thank you. I'll have Lisa Ryder and Dave Lake come up. And the next two slides, we'll talk a little bit just the project journey, but then we have a one-pager that really shows the full project, and then Lisa will go into some of the implications. Dave Lake will be able to later at the conclusion answer any questions you have, especially about the long-term facilities maintenance. So Lisa, just that project journey so far?
Right. Dr. Battle, I wonder, should we maybe have one of the coaches as well share in this process?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
You want to share?
Sure.
Thank you. Sir? Yeah, I can say, again, this project started, actually, it's pre-two thousand twenty. It started actually in two thousand nineteen where we, we had to, we were thinking of somehow expanding our baseball field. Our baseball field right now is not the size for a high school baseball field. And the dimensions just don't fit for our athletes. We don't even play our games at the high school anymore. And that takes away from just that campus atmosphere and our kids coming out and playing. We actually have to go to Alamega to do it.
Share where Alamega is, just in context, where Alamega is.
Okay, Alamega, yep.
Alamega is a baseball field that's.
It is our community field, yeah.
In Burnsville.
And so we started, our process started that we wanted to expand. And so it gives kids an opportunity to come out there and play in a high school field. And that led us to, in two thousand twenty, we thought it was a great opportunity for us to move our fences back. We had, and to give the kids up, like I said, because they're coming in with the pipeline. And they were going to do all this construction, we thought, hey, what a great time to do this. Put the fences back and the pipeline. In the fall of two thousand twenty, that project kind of, we started to think in a different direction. That pipeline kind of took everything away from us. It took away a lot. But two thousand twenty-one, we expanded, instead of just doing a recommendation, if we ever looked into the Cal Ripken Foundation. Cal Ripken Foundation has built over a hundred fields across the nation. They like to help out with districts that are struggling with financial money. They have their own people that come in and actually build these fields. They've done some in St. Paul. They've done some in St. Paul, they've also done some in Minneapolis. And we got on board with them and started to talk to them, and we've had 30, 40 conversations, at least, with Ripken Foundation. This has expanded into the fall of 2021, and now here we are proposing. So this has been a journey to get here, and again, we're very thankful for it. But with our, how things are changing in our school, we train, our kids right now train at the Savage Dome, and we lose out on a lot of these kids because they don't have transportation to go there. Our numbers also are dwindling a little bit down, and this gives us an opportunity to come out there and train every day, walk out the front door or walk out the back door, and walk right to that field, and gives us three extra months of working with these kids. It's a great, and I don't have to continue to go through what we've already talked about. We want to build something that's going to be for the community and for our, in our school. And Cal Ripken Foundation has given us that leeway, or given us at least a way of funding without having, and Lisa will probably talk about that, that it gives us, that they will help us through the funding to purchase this field and make this dream come true. So here we are tonight, through all these meetings, there's these dreams, these proposals, and I do appreciate you guys listening to us tonight.
So anything on here you'd like to...
Highlight, just on the swing for fans, we covered some of the benefits and, yep.
Yeah, thank for the, and the highlights, we went over like what the fields would do, and then with softball being on board, one thing, part of this, our outfield and the softball needs to be redone at some point, and this would be the opportunity to take care of that issue that we have. It's very, and it's, you know, it's been there for a long time, and it gets a lot of roly. So this, again, have the turf would help with that, that part for the softball program, but obviously with all the benefits that would happen with the baseball as well. The fundraising would be the next steps that we probably haven't talked much about, but we need approval from you as the board to move on to the next step with our fundraising, and I think that's where our next part of our presentation will go. And then being able to have that partnership with the Ripken Foundation to make this happen.
Yeah, I think, and part of that, too, is with the fundraising, and I'm not speaking, I don't want to speak for Roos and everything, he and I are like brothers. We really are, because I've coached with him for 13 years, so we think alike, we've done a lot of stuff together. But our fundraising, every year, we have to raise funds for our program just to play on our field. We pay for stipends for other coaches, and we pay for the maintenance of our field, and our maintenance crew does a great job, but a baseball and a softball field are completely different compared to a football field or a soccer field. We have dirt, we have clay, we have short grass, we have long grass, and our $30,000 to $40,000 that we raise every year through the community of fundraising will not come to the point that we can put this into a $1 million or a $3 million project. And this is why we have the Ripken Foundation coming, or helping, hopefully help us out if we get the approval. Project costs, again, are kind of going off the bottom, just keep it quiet. Talking too much. I can talk about baseball, softball, day on.
So Lisa and Dave, you want to run through all the implications?
Yeah, thank you.
So I have to say, with Guillaume not here, the three of them really check-ins with me, and I would ask questions, give them homework, but they really, the three, just kept working, and Lisa will share a little bit about all the vetting, and then we'll turn it over to Sarah.
So in this process, as we were considering what things we needed to consider and be able to kind of vet through before we brought this forward, the first thing was, you know, the impact to students, and the, as you've heard, it's really all about returning varsity baseball to the BHS campus, having state-of-art facility for both the baseball and the softball programs. The fact that it is inclusive of softball and baseball, we feel we have addressed our Title IX concerns that may have existed initially. There are, currently, there are the two activities that, you know, do not have a turf competition field to play on at ISD 191. So when you think of lacrosse and soccer and football, they have the Pates Stadium. I'm going to let Sarah speak to the legal in just a moment, as there are, there are a couple of agreements that have to be in play to make this all work, and that's what makes this a very unique situation. The visibility for 191, we do believe this is going to be a community transformation for us. And, you know, when we think about the policies that are going to need to be addressed, we know our facility's rental policy will need to be updated as well as our advertising policy, and we need to think a little further about what it exactly is that we are wanting and will allow to take place for advertising through this process, and that might have to come sooner versus later, should this project move forward, and as is being proposed. And then the finance piece of it, it's a necessity for us to have these partnership agreements in order to address the financing of this agreement, and you'll understand that better after Sarah speaks. And I think then we also have to consider the long-term piece, and Dave, you want to speak to that LTFM, that long-term facility maintenance?
Sure. So, you know, as we said before, the project itself, it's going to be fully funded, but then on the back end, there's an LTFM consideration. And so it is, you know, it's a considerable number. I put on there 2 million, that's on the high end. I'm looking at more 1.6 to 1.8. One advantage of these turf fields compared to the football, football, they say 10 to 12 years, but when you have football and lacrosse on that field, it doesn't hold up well, so, you know, you're looking at more like 10 years. Baseball, soccer, and softball is easier on our turf. It's a much better turf product that they put in now than they did before. It's a much safer product. So I think it would be reasonable to expect 12, 12 to 15, but let's just say 12 on the safe side for that lifespan. In addition, there'd be LTFM costs for lighting. That would be really minimal. The lighting itself, like the stadium lighting that we have right now, you know, that's, we did LED updates, that was about $12,000 when we did it. These would automatic, or these would start out as LED. You're paying for the electricity after the installation. They really have a long lifespan. Dugouts, grandstands, I mean, you've got a 25-year lifespan there. So the significant cost would be your turf. One thing that didn't come up, or it did, but I just wanted to speak a little bit more about it. So the varsity baseball field and the varsity baseball kids, through no fault of their own, there's an easement on our property with CenterPoint Energy, so we have two major pipelines that run through our property. And because of that, the field itself is not game-worthy or competition-worthy, and turf would allow that, and the reason why that is, is grass settles, dirt settles, but a turf field has a thick, multi-layered underlayment of sand and rock, and we've already reached out CenterPoint, they've given us permission to build upon it. And so that, that overcomes that barrier. So it is, you know, from a distance, it looks like a regular baseball field, but it's not, it's not playable for a varsity competition. So, you know, that area of our property is completely underutilized, and this would allow, you know, for all the other bonuses, but just from a grounds and maintenance standpoint, we can actually use it for what it's there for.
Thank you.
Sure. Chair Chester, members of the board, Superintendent Battle, I'm Sarah Sin Salaf from Kennedy and Graven. The first document that the board would be asked to approve with the Cal Ripken Foundation would be memorandum of understanding, and that's a non-binding agreement. Basically, a memorandum of understanding, and that would be between the foundation and the district. And basically, we have been provided a draft of that agreement from the Cal Ripken Foundation, and basically what it says in it is that it, the district would work with the foundation to fundraise. However, I think what's important here is that the district would not be actually doing the fundraising, the boosters would be doing the fundraising. And the reason for that is the district, if the foundation is going to construct this project, there's a competitive bidding issue. You know, we have to bid projects that are over $175,000, which obviously this would be. So the district really can't be constructing the field, so they really need to be truly a gift from the foundation and from the booster club. So that money needs to flow directly from the booster club to the foundation and not involve the district, so there wouldn't be any district funds involved there. So that's spelled out in the memorandum of understanding. And then the other thing that's spelled out is that the district would work with the foundation to draw up the plans and the budget. Those would be done at the foundation's expense. I suppose they'd be shared cost between the foundation and the booster club, because it is the district's property, so obviously the district wants to have a say in what the plans would look like and what the field would look like and the layout and all that. So that's essentially it with the memorandum of understanding. It's about two pages long, and it says it's non-binding. That'd be the first document that you would approve. I think that would be kind of the go-ahead then to allow the foundation and the booster club to get going with the fundraising and the plans. And then later on, the district would be asked to enter into a binding agreement, and it's called a declaration, and it would actually be recorded against the district's property. And that would be between the district and the foundation, and it is a 20-year commitment. So basically, the district would be agreeing to these terms in that document for a period of 20 years. It is renewable after that point for one-year periods, but either party, the district or the foundation, could terminate it by giving six months' notice, but you are committed for 20 years. So in that document, the foundation would construct the fields, as we talked about, and that would be using the boosters' funds and then the foundation's funds. The district would have the right to approve the plans, and then any significant changes to the plan, so anything over $10,000 would come back to the district to approve. The foundation would do the construction, that would pretty much start within 180 days of the plans being approved. And then the district would be responsible for maintaining the fields once they are complete, so that's kind of where your financial commitment would come in. And once again, you're in this for 20 years, so you would have to maintain the fields for 20 years. The fields also have a few use restrictions on them. They must be used for sports-related programs and youth activities. They can be used for private leagues, but the other uses have to be prioritized over private league use. And then the foundation also has the right to use the fields for 10 days each year for its activities, and that's for underserved youth in the community. So that's essentially the document you would be asked to approve. That's not going to happen now, that would happen later. I've reviewed both of these documents, and the foundation's attorney, I've had some suggested changes to the binding agreement, and it sounds like the foundation's attorney has approved those changes. I don't anticipate there being any issues if we do move forward with the project and we need to negotiate that agreement. I don't think there's going to be any major sticking points.
And so with that, our next steps, the first step is to request approval of the partnership agreement, and then, as Sarah said, she would have to execute the second part. And then at the front, that would include that final project scope, because it is our land, so we need to go through all of that. And then we would bring back that binding agreement, as Sarah described. And then it begins after that second step, the planning and creation. Mick and Eric, it's about an 18-month, and Dave, so six months of fundraising, and how long to actually put the project in?
12 months, right?
Yeah, 12 months.
So you're looking at use, spring 2024?
Correct. Yep, spring of 2024.
Spring 2024.
It's the soonest, right?
Next steps, is that my last slide?
Yes.
So I just want to share a little bit, kind of just personal about this journey with sports. So my brother just turned 75 on the 22nd, and he was the baseball player in our family. Love from my grandmother, a grandmother who used to follow the Negro baseball leagues. And Philadelphia, where I was born, has a unfortunate racist history about the integration of baseball. Connie Mack, and some of you, if you watch movies, that they were pretty much the worst team, the Philadelphia team, when the sport was integrated. And then because of those breakthrough players that made it from the Negro League, there was a surge of black players. But Mick will tell you, in the last 20 years, we don't understand why our African-American kids aren't going into baseball, and then our students who are Spanish-speaking, we're seeing a drop in their interest, too. And so Cal Ripken and other organizations have made this commitment that it is a great game, and we don't understand why it's not reflecting the diversity of our country anymore. And so when they came to me to say, you know, we've been doing this for a few years, what do you think about it? That was the first connection that I had. So sports, the benefits, the research, the evidence is clear of the benefits for kids. And then the community, the way sports can bring a community together. And so I just want to share, it was more than the vetting. It's kind of that personal about how it has changed lives and what it means to. And so with that, we end our report, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. It's very clear hearing from our coaches, the passion that you have in this project and the amount of work that you've put in to bring this to us tonight. I open it up to our board here for questions, clarifications.
I can go.
Proceed.
Thanks again for being here and giving us, it really shows the, you know, the work that has gone through with the baseball team and softball team, and I can see how both of you are really eager to get, you know, this started. My question is, with our community changing, and, you know, Dr. Battle, you really hit on a good, you know, a good point on how can we reflect our community in baseball and softball? And what are some ideas in our initiatives that you guys have discussed to bring that to all of our students, especially our students of color? Since we all are here for that, right? We're, we know that our community has changed and is continuing to change.
So go ahead, Mick and Eric, you can answer, and then I'll add on our connection with our community education.
Sure, that's a great question, and I think that's, that's part of having this turf field where kids who are, maybe not have the resources, that we could provide that, because they could walk right from school, right out there and have the clinics. Like I previously said, we have already started to try to integrate more clinics for kids of color. We've done this now for two years, and our, like I said, our numbers are starting to come up. It's going to be a battle, but I think with having a facility such as this, this is a community kind of field. This is not just the Burnsville field, and I think through the passion of us that everyone's behind, I know I will be there for, through and through, getting kids, recruiting kids, still running clinics for kids, but to walk out on a field that they feel very comfortable and very proud of, I think that's, and also that people care about them, care about kids in general. I think this is one big step to help with, with that, which, the question that you had just asked.
So Eric, let me just piggyback on that. So Mick mentioned the clinics, and so when I did ask our community connectors, Hamdi and Etika, about this, they said that's one of the first thing, kids have to be engaged early. And Hamdi said she tries to tell them each to bring a friend. So remember, we heard earlier the student who talked about Genesis work, and now he has his friends? So that's really what they hope to do. The other piece is people have to see people who look like them, so we need coaches of color. And so that's the other piece I know that you are using as an ideal, and also community has said that's key, and so when they look for instructors, they're going to help with that. But as I said, in the last 20 years, there's been a dearth, and I don't know how that happened. Minnesota was really on the forefront. We had the first woman integrate the male baseball league, St. Paulite, Tony Stone. I mean, it's just, we just need to figure... I mean, it's just, we just need to figure out what happened. It was a desired sport and it reflected our community. So Eric, the other ideas you had.
You hit it right on the head, exactly what I was going to say. I started, you know, taking over the softball program and it was a rebuilding process. So kind of that same idea. And so I'm putting a lot of time in offseason and doing free clinics and things with all kids. I hired an African-American coach this year, Tommy Gaston. So he's coaching with us this year, so I have enough face. And so those things, it's funny when you said, "Bring a friend." That's all, I say every time I go to any clinic, I have, "Hey, bring a friend with you." So we're seeing a little bit more diversity in softball this year than I had the first year I took over. So I'm hoping to continue that. But yeah, doing those projects of reaching out, like Coach said, starting off at a younger age, having coaches of color is going to help with that greatly. So I think those would be ways that we can.
And the other piece, giving kids the confidence they can do this. It just takes practice. And we've seen that with our girls, hockey players. So we had six players this year that had never skated before on that varsity team that took third place. So it's just saying, "Come on out and play." That care, you can do it. And so we're seeing some diversity in that way too. So that's really important. Kids need to know people care about them, they see them, and they're going to support them.
Can I make a comment? So I have a son who's played baseball. And I can see kind of what might be part of the issue because he doesn't want to play anymore. And it's coaching. And I think it's a difficulty in getting parents and people qualified to coach at the younger age level. And by the time they get to high school, they've decided they don't want to play. And that's the situation I'm in with my son. He doesn't want to play now. And I'm sad because I loved watching him play baseball. And so I don't know how you can solve for that issue.
Well, Coach Shaw and I, great, great point. We, the last few years, we've done some fellowship of Christian athletes types of training with, and really coaching from within and trying to find the passion of coaching, not for the wins and losses, but the love of the game and all the joys and lessons you can learn from the game. And there's a push right now to try to teach that towards the youth coaches. And it's not about winning, it's about that. So it takes, you know, it takes a lot of people for that to happen. And it takes the right people and the right organization for that to happen. There's a great book that we read together, part of that organization, Inside Out Coaching, from Bill Irman. And that's a great book that we tried to establish that because you hit it on the head. We don't want kids to stop playing for us before they get to us. We know we take pride in coaching that way, but we definitely have to get the youth coaches involved. So that's a big issue, it's a universal issue. But hopefully we can continue to spread that message and get that out, so.
And I guess my question is, you know, sticking with the baseball analogy, since that seems to be the key focus here. Although I would say that softball is just as important because we need to make sure that our girls have a place to play. And the information was incredibly light on softball, which I couldn't help but notice. So build it and they will come. This is a huge ask. And I'm going to have a couple of questions about LTFM and, you know, that. But build it and they will come. This board needs to hear, not just from our staff, the commitment from the coaches in terms of, we're not just going to build it and think that people are going to walk out the back door. And we just heard, you missed the presentation perhaps earlier, where we heard about making sure that our students feel like they belong. And what kind of, you know, personal commitment do you as coaches make to our students who aren't on your team? Because as of now, Dr. Battle, you're correct, you're absolutely correct. It's a singular demographic that plays baseball and softball. That is not who this district is. And my concern is that we build it and they don't come.
I guess my response to that would be, as teachers in this district and, you know, being trained in the culture refreshment classroom and doing other things, I take pride in making sure I get to reach all my students in my classroom. And maybe something that I could do, you know, I'm invested. You know, hopefully I have 20 more years left in this district after having almost 20 end. And seeing the district trains, as you mentioned, you know, I take pride in my classroom reaching every student in my classroom. And maybe it's something that I need to take and go to the younger levels, teaching at the high school level and seeing those kids, it's kind of like, and kind of when I already started in the softball program, being new to it, I go reach the youth, I need to go make that effort to reach all the youth in our district and continue to do that.
And I'm reassured to hear that you're a teacher in the district. I didn't want to make any assumptions because I know that not all coaches are teachers. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. Yeah, and Coach Shaw is also a teacher in the district as well.
That's how I met Mick first, was at the middle school during one of my walkthroughs. And I said, "I need to go to the gym." And he was shocked, "You came to the fire class?" You remember that?
Yes, I do.
And I think it's like a really important issue because reflection is a big thing. I, you know, my daughter played softball from second grade to seventh grade, I believe. And she dropped out because none of the girls looked like her. And it is an important conversation in to have a pathway, to have, how do we get there? How do we change the pictures you guys had to reflect the community that we are in right now? And I'm glad to hear that the conversations are starting. But I also don't want to be oblivious to the fact that just opening a spot and hoping people, students will join. There has to be the work that needs to be done.
Well, you need to be having conversations with the people who are leaving and not coming back for baseball at the younger levels. Because I can tell you, my son's baseball teams are diverse in elementary school. They are diverse. So what is happening that they're not continuing as they get into middle school and then high school? You're not having that diversity anymore. Something's happening.
Right. And then another thing that I definitely want to touch base on is the financial part for families and the commitment of having to be able to afford some of the things that baseball and softball requires. And if we are changing the demographic, then we're also thinking about, can our families afford some of these things that are needed in both sports? And what are we providing as far as assistance so that it does not create another barrier for them?
I will point out, I think, so my children, they both started in Burnsville and they graduated from Burnsville. One graduated two years ago, one was last year. She graduated, both in college now. But they both were very much into sports. And I'm glad to see, I wasn't a part of that conversation. So you guys would know a lot more about it than I do. But they were both middle schoolers when we cut middle school sports. And I know that a lot of the kids that they played with at that time, they were done after that. That was like, that was like a shut door for them. And we lost a lot of kids. Just as a parent, I watched that like, oh my gosh, all these kids that they were playing with, now they're... So I think that's fantastic decision that the board, you know, that we opened up the middle school sports again. Because I think that'll really help, that we don't take these young kids that are excited about these sports and then cut them off in middle school and then they're no interest by high school. So I think that was a really wise decision.
And the conversations at the time were very difficult. It was not an easy cut to make by many of you.
Yeah, and I don't have that perspective.
Yeah, no, I'm just, for people that weren't here, the board agonized over the cuts that we had to make that year. And we knew that cutting middle school athletics was, I mean, activities are very important. You know, athletics are important. There are lots of different ways to engage our students. So, you know, being incredibly supportive of wanting to engage our students and making sure that the money that you're asking us for isn't going to be for naught. I would want to have, you know, more of a proposal about, okay, how is it? What's the plan from, you know, again, you know, the budget is not finalized. But if this board chooses to add back middle school athletics, then how are we going to change it so that our activities and athletics are truly representative, as is the coaching staff? And I also want to understand more about what we are doing, of course, understanding that middle school athletics has not been a thing. What is our plan, Dave, for, you know, facilities enhancement on our playing fields district-wide? Because we're talking about this huge investment with LTFM over time. And I know that, you know, having looked at the last LTFM, Eagle Ridge is getting something, BHS is getting an improvement as well. I really would like to understand if we are going to start committing LTFM, that we're doing it equitably across the district.
So let me answer the first question, Director Hall. That's where our new community connectors have stepped up to say they can get the information from the community about the barriers. So Hamdi and Etika have made that commitment, they will meet with them. And they will be that connection with those families to actually find out why kids aren't joining. So are they feeling welcome? Do they have support? What are other barriers? And so that's the plan for the first part, for us to really sit down and hear from the community. And they'll help us do that. And then the second part about LTFM, did you want to?
Sure.
Dave, take that. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So on the LTFM side, of course, there's, we have X amount of dollars that were given from the state. So I wish we were given more, but we're not. So we have to prioritize. But yeah, this year, I'm working with Community Ed. We're hoping to get some new goals, soccer goals over at Eagle Ridge. Something that recently came up was the goalposts at the middle schools. So that's something that, I'm always looking for, you know, when we have these projects that go out, say it's a million-dollar project. It gets bid, and if it comes in lower, then I look for, I call them plus projects that I wrap in. And so I'm always, I have an ongoing list of, you know, a $10,000 item or $20,000 where we can put them in. And so to your point, I'd love to do it all, but, you know, at the middle schools, I can say, we did this before, before we knew Metcalf was going to be closed. But we did all the baseball fences over there a few years ago. Now Nicolet's in kind of in that same boat, so we'll have to do the same thing there. Especially without Metcalf because we're going to lose some of our baseball diamonds. So we have that. And then, you know, some goalposts to do and soccer goals at Eagle Ridge. But we did the tennis courts at all the sites a few years back. So those are in terrific shape. They're really nice. But yeah, to your point, I'd love to do it all, but we've just got to pick a pecking order and... Yeah, but thank you.
Since you did say this would be a community field, not just a Burnsville High School field. So you are going to have middle school kids playing on it. Will they be playing just during the school year? Are you going to have summer projects, I assume, on it also, boys and girls?
For the turf.
For the turf, for the field, for the whole, yeah, softball and baseball.
Yeah, so to be, it would be our own students. It would be, you know, you would have your community clinics, community ed rentals, traveling baseball. So to be similar to like Pates Stadium where we have a whole variety of groups that are able to benefit, as well as our own community, you know, so not even, you know, of course, our own students, but then our communities are able to benefit, kind of like your BAC and, you know, things. We have a lot of basketball, gymnasium rentals. It would be the same thing for these fields. And that was the big thing too with the lighting and the turf is it adds about three more months of opportunities for usage, opportunities for rentals, opportunities for revenue. And, you know, for both. And then there also is the ability, I don't know if we touched on it or not, but the ability to have not a full-size soccer field, but like for the younger kids to play across the outfield on the baseball diamond, or on the baseball outfield, I should say.
Okay, because see, I haven't had kids in sports for quite a while and they weren't in baseball. They chose other sports. So I'm just a little naive about, do you use it in the summer too? I mean, not just after-school activity, it is all throughout the summer.
Yep, all summer. Yeah, as a matter of fact, Mick could answer this better than I can, but they have a, it's a Burnsville-wide, the Burnsville traveling baseball tournament. And they literally take over the high school fields, anything they can get on Burnsville property. Right after school, that's out. Usually it's that same weekend, I think. Yeah, so as our high schoolers leave, our fields are swarmed right after graduation with...
Okay, good.
So two more fields they could play on.
So that's good to know in my mind too, that we'll utilize this field for multi-reasons, uses rather, I'm sorry, for the community, like maybe perhaps even T-ball, you know?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, that would be great. That would be great.
I just have a question for Sarah. I apologize, it's getting pretty late and I don't know why. You said the LTFM was a 20-year commitment. Can you kind of explain why 20, like, I just want to know?
Sure. So you would be entering into a binding agreement and that would be a 20-year term. And in that agreement, it basically says that the district is responsible for maintaining the fields during that 20-year term.
So it's that replacement after the 12 years. They want to make sure you're not going to let it go and...
Sure, okay.
So whatever needs to be done within that 20-year term, that's going to be your responsibility.
Thank you.
Director Miller.
Thank you for everyone for your presentations tonight and bringing forward this. I would like to remind us that we are having a workshop here about a presentation that was brought forward for building a field on campus. And while I do not discount at all the concerns about the participation in our programs in Burnsville and other factors around that, baseball's no different than a lot of other sports these days. By the time these kids are reaching Coach Shaw and Coach Reese, they need to have had some training. So the participation part is a little out of their control. Now, having said that, I want to know, I want to say from personal experience, these two gentlemen are probably the top leaders in our program here in Burnsville in interacting and going down into the youth program. I don't think that they're completely just saying, "If you build it, they will come." But what they are saying is currently, baseball is played on a park over deep in the woods in Burnsville. Most people don't even know where that park is and how to get there. And if we had a park here on campus that would have lights on at night and games going on and such, I think that the message they're trying to say is it would draw some attention to baseball and softball in our community. I have a few questions. Can I, first of all, assume that if I was to attend a game here, unlike at the current Alumagnet Park, I probably wouldn't end up with a dented hood on my car on a foul ball? Is that fair to say? Lisa, do you know what the current Alumagnet arrangement is? That's a city park, is it not? And we're renting that? Is there a cost associated with that?
I could probably answer that. There is a cost to that and our boosters pay for that. It does not come from our district. We have to raise the money for it.
Okay.
So it's about $2,000 a year.
Okay. The pitchers are nice, but I, you know, I don't see anything with grandstands. I assume there would be some sort of grandstand. I saw the word grandstand in the, there are some expectations of fan seating in these design elements here, right? Okay. You talked a little bit about usage of the fields, rent was brought up, such like that. So is that primarily expected of the youth programming and such? I know some other models in the Twin Cities, I'm not sure how, have interacted with other programming like, you know, adult softball leagues and things like that. And if that is in the model, I would just caution you to remember that we have some rather tight restrictions, meaning you would be on a Burnsville campus most predominantly. You wouldn't be able to serve beer, obviously, which may or may not limit the amount of tournaments that would want to be held there. So has that all been brought in and thought about in the process?
So any events that take place on our property will then need to follow our policies.
And by doing that, I'm just saying that may limit our ability to lease out the field. And I'm hoping that's been thought and considered as part of the process. So I have a couple of questions about this MOU. So the MOU that's presented, that's the non-binding. And then when you referenced the binding, Sarah, you were, I think that's the document that's listed for us as a deed, right? Is that correct? Okay. And so, you know, just to be perfectly blunt, this board, primarily me as I was chair at the time, had to absorb the deconstruction of a previous arrangement that was for the scoreboard at the football fields that amounted to me taking phone calls while actually on a youth baseball... on a youth baseball tournament out in South Carolina. But anyway, the, I just wanna be very, we just wanna be very careful about what we're, what we're entering into here, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that we've had legal representation reviewing this in advance. So the, the fundraising would occur, the, and, and the Cal Ripken group would come in. They're asking for some split on that, or is that clarified early on? Or is it like a 50-50 deal? Or do we know what they, how they typically run it?
Want to answer on that one? The Ripken Foundation, right now, said they would help us, they didn't come up with an exact number, but they kinda wanna see what we can come up with, and then they would come back with...
Who blinks first?
Exactly.
All right. So, yeah, so that, really, the, the difference between the 1 million and the 3 million option is how aggressive we can be here on our fundraising side, and they may gap fill on that afterwards. I see. So clearly, I'm, it looks like advertising is part of the consideration, advertising both on the scoreboard and out on the, on the, on the fence. Help me understand a little bit about the long-term implications of that. Is there, is there a point where we start receiving funding on the, on the advertising?
So without the first agreement being executed yet by the board, everything we've considered thus far has been, you know, what-if kind of thoughts, right? So there is conversation around, what if, as they are approaching potential donors, there's the ask for some type of advertising as, you know, part of what they're, you know, they also will be seeing? Could it be something that's embedded in the turf? Could it be something that's on the fence? Is it something, you know, how does that look? We have to figure out how we would have to handle that, given our policy. Are we open to that being something that we allow for a certain period of time or not? Because our policy currently doesn't really address that. And so we have a more generalized policy at this moment, and we would need to probably create the proper language. And Sarah, if you have any feeling on this, feel free, because we know that that's, that's something that we have to kinda figure out, and we have to make sure that the board's policy reflects that which you are willing to allow.
And Sarah, before you answer that, so unfortunately, some districts, because of lack of resources, are starting to sell naming rights. And I've been in previous districts where advertising was allowed per board policy, and all the proceeds were split among all the high schools. So it was a very tight agreement. And of course, it had to be appropriate. And so that would be something, if it did come up, we don't know if it has in these other entities where Cal Ripken has worked in, because as Mick said, they are national, and they go municipalities, school districts. So that would be something we would have to...
All right. But so if I understand right, what we're talking about right now is fundraising and possible like, like, for like, advertising associated with said raised money around construction costs, right? So Eric's Plumbing Company says, I'll give you $20,000 towards the construction, but, but I'd like to have a sign out there on, on, you know, outfield or whatever, right?
So we'd need to ask legally, can we do that? Because we have to be very careful not to have any dollars into this mix. And could that be considered that? And so that's...
But what I'm asking is, after we've raised the $3 million for the field, and in this, in turn, you know, this 20-year binding agreement we're inside of, are we allowed to sell advertising out there then? And is that what you're understanding, is they have no claim on any of that, the Cal Ripken group?
I reviewed the agreement, the binding agreement, and there is nothing in there about advertising. So that would be something you would be free to do.
Okay. And then I just, I would express a little bit of concern, because we had the same conversation when it was around the scoreboard, is if we are now in the business of soliciting and selling advertising, great funds coming in, but you are gonna have to have somebody on your staff doing that, right? And that's, that would be the challenge.
Yeah, so we're working on creating a, kind of a subgroup, I'll call it, could be a committee. It's a matter of, you know, people approach certain individuals within our organization when they're interested. So we wanna funnel that to the right folks who can then have that legal document that we are working on and still creating, that will define exactly what we're making available. So we would wanna be really clear through our revision to the policy with regard to where we are allowing advertising, what it is that we would be charging. It would look a little bit more like your facility rental policy, honestly. And at the same time, we envision that being kind of incorporated together, so that as we are renting facilities, we're also renting out the advertising, and it would become one big process that way.
And you'll present this back to the board?
Yep. I mean, the policies would have to come through the regular process, yes.
So if you take the first step, then we know for the second step, we gotta work on all these other pieces that may come up, yes.
So then, the, the binding agreement for 20 years, really, all the, I know I'm oversimplifying it, but what we're on the hook there for is to guarantee that we will maintain the field. Plus, you said they get a few days out of the year for their usage, is that some, which sounds very healthy as it is, but, okay. Is there any for cause termination possibility in that? Or is that real, I mean, what if for some reason they go a different way we're, we're interested in, and we don't wanna be associated with the Cal Ripken group anymore, or something like that? Is that in that con, in that language at all?
Yes, it is. There is, there is a termination clause in there, and it's, it's for cause. And then after the 20-year agreement, after the 20-year period is over, then either party may terminate for any reason.
Yes, yeah, okay. I mean, why would we, why would we extend it after that, other than, I guess, the opportunity, just the opportunity to let them come and use it once a year? That's about the only reason we'd have, right? After the 20?
Yeah, I mean, I would think you would just wanna do it as a goodwill gesture to them.
Right. So my understanding at this time is what we're, we're discussing, and then will be brought forward, is just to basically say, hey, go out and see what you can find out in the community by raising some money, right? And...
The MOU.
The MOU. Which would allow them to start fundraising. We're not obligated to any kind of funds at this point, or, or any commitment of any kind, see where it ends up. What happens if fundraising is successful, but not nearly as successful as we desire? Is, is the boosters in charge of that money, and are they the retainers of that money, then?
The, the expectation is that the funds that are raised are going to the foundation. And if they don't build anything, then, you know, that, that money's gonna come back to the boosters, then, for the portion that they brought forward.
Right.
If we are going to work with Cal Ripken, they are working with, I might say this wrong, a sole-source provider, essentially, so they're not doing a bidding process.
Right.
So if, if for some reason we were not working with Cal Ripken, then we would be back to needing to do a bid process for whatever it is that we have fundraised for. And at that point in time, then we can be involved in that fundraising process and/or, you know, contribution to it.
And, I mean, I noticed that the, I think it was the binding part, anyway, it talks about commitment on our side, and mostly about the boosters during the fundraising. But is it fair to say that they reciprocate? I mean, I would hope that they have probably some pretty good experience on ways to reach to the community and...
Are you talking they being Cal Ripken?
The Cal Ripken group. They must send somebody out to talk to you about ideas and things, and give their logo on stuff.
And so the twins, you know, yeah, so...
The whole family?
The pol, yeah, so, yes.
So they've expressed to us, they want our boosters to take the first couple of steps, because, and it's the same, it goes back to that 20-year agreement. They wanna see us take those first steps and hold our bargain, part of the bargain, because they've got their name and foundation on the line here. They've done over 100 of these fields, and four in our state, and they wanna make sure that it's... They, actually, they've already identified donors, but they're not, they haven't even shared them with us, because potential donors, because they, they, they wanna bring it, they'll be able to bring it home for us. But we need to take that, we need to show our commitment on our side. So they said they, you know, they don't wanna put money out there and, and have us not do our part, because they're, they're prepared to succeed. That's why they do this, because they know what they're doing, and, and they want that commitment from us, like to upkeep it and, and do our part of the fundraising.
Okay, that's...
What's the booster's confidence in being able to raise the revenue?
The booster's confidence in raising revenue? A lot.
No, 'cause like, I, I had heard, like, oh, we raised like $40,000 a year. $40,000 is a little less than, you know, 3-point-something million, so...
Right, yeah, and with all the, with the timeline, you saw, there's been a lot of talk about what we can do. So we have a list of names, and, and I would speak for the boosters that are here tonight, and I think they're very confident that we can get some...
And part of that conversation with Cal Ripken, they're interviewing us. So for them to say they want to agree with us?
Yes.
That's a big thing. They wanna work with us. So I, I, we weren't a part of those conversations they had, because they needed to hear from them. And so for them to say, yes, we wanna enter an agreement, so it's something in their vetting, they think it can be done.
How much was the LTFM fund, um, cost, you said?
I'm estimating 1.6 to 1.8, but I, I said 2, just to err on the, on the high side.
We're very conservative.
And historically, surprisingly enough, the turf now, square footage, it's, it's a better product, it's safer, and it's actually a little bit cheaper than it was. Like, we spent less on the turf this time around than we did 10 years ago. I think it was, was it 7, 759 or something like that? And this last time, it was 613 or 616. So 10 years later, it's better, and it's kinda like technology, it's better, and it's a little bit less money. Still very expensive.
I have just one last question. For Sarah, I'm sorry to bring you back. Just when you thought you were finished. So I'm, I'm, I have to ask the question, in terms of precedent, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that we're not setting up any future board for any precedent that, that might be unintended if this were to go forward, that might put them in a bind?
No, I mean, first of all, you'll be entering into that MOU, which is a non-binding agreement. So let's say this goes on for a couple of years, and a future board doesn't wanna do it anymore. There's nothing saying you have to go forward. And then once you do, I mean, obviously, a future board is gonna have to approve the binding agreement, and then that will be binding on the district at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question. I mean, I think you might have touched on this, but it's been, others have said a long night, so... Apologies if you're gonna have to repeat yourself, but every construction project, most every construction project at some point has some cost overruns. So my question is, how, how would those be handled under this agreement and this project, if it, if it does happen? So that if it goes $100,000, $200,000 over budget, who's on the hook for paying that money? And what does that process look like, I guess?
That, that would be the responsibility of the, either the boosters or the, the foundation. We would probably need to spell that out in the agreement, in terms of who, because they had, they would have a certain share, and I don't think they've determined, it sounds like they haven't determined what their shares would be, you know, like 40, 60, 50, 50, in terms of the costs. But I'm assuming the cost overruns would be also split that way? Or maybe the foundation would pick up the, the cost overrun? So that's something that would need to be negotiated and put in the, in the binding agreement.
And that would be in the binding agreement, I think, though?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the relationship between the, the Cal Ripken and, and the builder, the, this group that they use, or whatever? As you said, it's a singular deal, right?
I don't know.
I, I'm just, I, I, I'm guessing that some of that is, I won't call it charity, but they're probably somebody that's coming in...
They have, they have set plans that they kinda work from, and they have defined, like, how they, how they go about doing these fields, depending upon what it is that you're choosing, and including in the project, with the, the numbers that they've done across the nation, they just, they told us right from the beginning, we only work with this group.
Right.
So part of it, when you work with these Hall of Famers, it's their legacy, and they want quality. So whether it's the golf Jack Nicholson, and so that was upfront, no, we just don't work with anybody. This is our, his legacy, and so that's part of it, too. So that, yeah, that was, they were very upfront with it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm guessing, I'm just making a guess here, but I'm guessing that this group they work with has access, there's, there's economies of scale that they, they can leverage, there's access to resources that, you know, may not be immediately available in the market space, simply because of the projects they're working on. They may do other things during the day. This might be their sort of way of giving back themselves, is to have their names tagged working with the Cal Ripken project.
Our, our only red flag initially was the fact that we have our, the big clause. And so when we reached out about that, that's where we brought Sarah in right away, just to review the agreements that they had done before previously here in the state with the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board.
And we wouldn't enter in, we wouldn't be, it wouldn't be proposed that we enter into the, the binding arrangement until the funds are clearly secured and replaced, right?
Scope would have to be determined, yep.
The, the MOU starts the process, that gives the boosters, the permit, and the foundation permission to raise the funds, and then they come back with the funds raised to say, now let's enter into a formal agreement, if I'm following. Yeah.
I think we all just have PTSD from the scoreboard.
Sarah will tell you when we first, I said, please talk to Maggie Walner before you... So Sarah got clear direction for me.
Great, so any other final questions, comments? Do maybe a sense of where board members are at, as we look to bringing this to new business in an upcoming board meeting?
It's a lot of money. It's a big commitment. But I am open to it, provided the Cal Ripken Foundation and our baseball boosters are able to deliver on what they believe they'll be able to deliver. I also think, I didn't say this earlier, but I agree, I think it was Eric that said, the high school, once they, once the kids get to high school, it's very hard to redirect if they haven't already been playing base, youth baseball. So I think there are probably some opportunities to look at how our youth baseball programs in the community are doing, to try and increase some of that involvement, and hopefully get them in the pipeline, so that we have a stronger, more vibrant, more people in our baseball program once they get to high school.
Can I, oops. Okay. I believe this will be a, a very nice addition to our facilities, being that I've been to several high schools and other communities, and, you know, seeing the things that they have, and just, it'll bring us up a, a level, I, I feel like. And I, I think it would, it would be great for our community to have it, too. You know, something that we can be proud of, you know? And like you said, bring, bring baseball back to onsite at Burnsville High School, I think would be a great thing. So this is exciting, I think.
I'm gonna reserve judgment. I'd really like to understand more about student engagement. It is a concern, it's a big price tag. It is exciting. I also remember that we, you know, this board has made cuts and added things back and vice versa. So, you know, right now, we're talking about adding middle school athletics back. Who knows what the future will bring? Not that that's enough to prevent this decision, but I need more information.
I think it's gonna be a great, hopeful asset to the community. I am hopeful that, starting the kids younger than just high school, will really engage not only the kids, but parents and the community. And since the money's not coming out of the school district budget, I say go for it, boosters, and this Cal Ripken Corporation that's helping pay for this. I mean, I don't see what we have to lose, and I think it's definitely worth trying.
I think the question really is just whether to bring forward the MOU for vote in the next session, and I am supportive of that. I, I think it was in one of the other presentations that we were talking about pathways, and how awesome it is, we're interacting and engaging with the community and, and finding grants and such, and this is 100% that type of an arrangement here. So, yeah, I mean, bring it forward, and we'll, we'll put it on a vote.
Okay. My biggest thing is engagement.
Yep.
And I don't want it to be a surprise for you, for everyone that's involved. But being a softball parent is exciting for me, really exciting. So, yeah.
I, I think I'm in agreement, too, in terms of hearing more from our... I, I think I'm in agreement, too, in terms of hearing more from our students in, in terms of what they, kind of like what we heard with pathways and, and with the various affinity groups having voice and determining kind of what they want. It'd be good to hear or see if we can get some of that, that youth voice when we have you come back to our, our regular board meeting to make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Stacy Solvin, Executive Director of Human Resources and Chase Ambrosia with One Digital to present about annual insurance premiums.
Dr. Battle, early is on time, no matter how early you are.
He, he got the wrong message. He was here at six o'clock.
Actually, Leslie, you were in, you were at Caribou before me.
Oh, I love. I thought it looked familiar to me.
I still have a little bit left. I've been nursing it.
All right. Well, good evening. A lot of information tonight. Hopefully, the pump has been primed as we move towards a, a lot of extraryal tables about health insurance. So we got a lot of information here for you. I promise to keep our presentation under two hours. So we should be good.
All I have to say is, nobody's winning.
This is our workshop each spring. We come and we, we meet with you as a board to present to you some background information on our health insurance plan and a little bit on our dental. Prior to us coming, the next meeting where we'll bring the actual proposal for our insurance rates for the next year. Since we are a self-funded organization for our healthcare plans, we set the rates within the district, what that will look like. We are going to be bringing to you a proposal of six and a half percent for our medical and a slight increase for our dental insurance and plus our long-term disability in life and those premiums. So we do that all at the same time. We do that early April so that we can start setting up the systems for open enrollment that begins in May. Our plan year goes from July 1 till June 30. So that's why we have open enrollment in May, gives them the, gives us another month in June to process, get the cards sent out and everybody set up. We are looking at six and a half percent. Three major factors that are tying into this, it's more than what we've had in the past few years. It, it sounds like a big number. If, if Chase and the, the consultants had their way, it would probably be a little bit larger. That'd be their comfort level. We have a good fund balance in that. I want to recommend that we do do six and a half, dip into it a little bit. And again, part of the, is the three reasons in which I present with you here. One, we spent nearly four million dollars on COVID-related costs over the two years. Okay? That hopefully is a kind of a one-time event. We know that that will sunset. So to take on a percentage increase in our health insurance, when we know that that type of cost will start to decline, especially with looking at our budget, I, I wouldn't recommend that. The other piece is we are anticipating inflationary costs that are rolling into this. You have salaries that are going up, shortage of workers, as well as supply chains. Not only is this hitting every industry, it will hit our healthcare industry and it will drive our prices up as well. That is a little bit more of an unknown, how long that may last before it kind of settles back in as well. And finally, the last area that is our, I want to say major concern, but it is something that we know is going to be an ongoing issue for us that we have to address. We have a number of members on our plan that push us over the top of our stop loss year over year. This is not going to go away. And over the past few years, and I'll let Chase get into those numbers specifically, but we are underfunded in our stop loss insurance portion of our insurance plan. We need to make an adjustment to that. That is going to be a fairly significant increase. That ties into the six and a half percent in which we're bringing to you tonight. Okay? The information that we have or that we provided you, lots of tables, lots of different information, lots of different ways of slicing and dicing all of this information. Chase has a few specific tables that he's going to talk through here in a moment. If you have questions on those, by all means, please feel free to comment on that. But the information that we provided you is the information that our benefits committee meets on monthly. So they go through all this information monthly. And different representatives from all of our labor units make up our benefits committee. So teachers are on it, EAs, food service, all of the different groups. They review the information. They understand our plan. They help make recommendations. They help take talking points back to the other members. This year, we spent some time on our software to do open enrollment. We're going to stick with our current vendor yet for this spring. It's a little late to try to make the transition. But with their help, next year, we are going to switch vendors. So they help in a lot of the behind the scenes types of things as well. A number of years ago, they were instrumental in, in becoming informed and helping us with the recommendation of moving towards our prescription rebates. Our prescription rebates are a little over eight hundred thousand dollars this year so far. And that goes back towards our plan. So as folks are going, using the prescriptions, we get the rebates and it helps offset our, our premium costs as well. And we take that into account as, as we bring these premiums to you. So the information you're getting in under two hours, information in which our benefit committee gets all year long on a monthly basis, about 90 minutes each month, and that they're up to speed. But we want you to have the opportunity to see this, understand it, as we make the recommendation, bring to you the proposal next month. Okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chase.
Try to keep it under two hours. People know I talk a lot, so.
But you talk fast.
Talk fast, too. So, you know, with the information that you got, it wa, it was a lot of information. So I thought it'd be helpful to kind of condense and summarize into the presentation that's on the screen and, and that you guys have as well, to kind of speak to what the risk is so you can put it into perspective as to what we've been dealing with the last, you know, 12 months, the last few years, but also in realizing, as Stacy mentioned, there's always been volatile risk on the plan. We took this thing self-insured with a half a million dollar claimant on a, a very expensive drug. So we've always known that there is risk and there's always going to be risk associated with a group of this size. The COVID expense, nobody could have predicted that happening into the manner that it did, but you guys are not in your own siloed bucket. Pretty much every district is in that same bucket in dealing with that unprecedented spend that we've seen. So to summarize, you know, on this rolling 12 claim summary, right now, you know, if you look at the top, you can see that the current spend is about 22.7, 22.8 million dollars. Forecast it, it's in that range of 20 to 23.7, probably focus on the middle of around 22 million. So we know that there's ongoing risk that is going to continue. When you look at the breakdown of the recent rolling 12, medical spend being 18.8 million, followed by pharmacy spend being almost four million, puts it into perspective that we have high utilization or high cases affecting both manners of what people need for healthcare. The turnover rate, it gives perspective as to what are we seeing in terms of the population turnover year over year. For you guys, it's pretty much been between the 10 to 13 and a half percent. So that's very consistent, even through the budget cuts that have happened, you know, pretty much the last eight to 10 years. Average age is good. You know, you're right where you want to be. Male to female ratio is pretty much in line with school district space because they're more female populated. And that's going to translate to the enrollment that is also on the insurance. If you look at that bottom graph on the left-hand side and you look at the spend correlation, you can see that it's not our employees that are necessarily the driver of our claims. It is the spouses and the dependent children. There is only two months here probably where the spend for the employee is equal to one of those other categories, spouses or dependents. So that is in large part, you know, a big thing that is occurring in terms of this overall utilization, some of these high cases and the needs of the healthcare for staff and their family. If you look at the top right graph, you can kind of see the volatility that we have in this most recent rolling 12 compared to the previous rolling 12, where you look at the spikes in June of 21, September of 21, December of 21 are pretty significant. And then lastly, on this page, looking at member paid or our plan paid versus member paid, we know that the district provides a very good insurance plan and it is mostly funded by the district. And that is reflective in, you know, the offering and what people appreciate about, about the insurance offering through Burnsville Schools. Going down to the next page, the utilization, just putting to some perspective. So last year, I gave you guys a number that from plan years 15, 16 to 19, 20, you paid, I believe it was six, or you paid like four some million dollars in stop loss premium and stop loss paid over six million. Basically, it was a deficit of about 1.8 million. That didn't factor in the last plan year. If you look at the bottom left-hand chart on the left-hand side, you can see the amount over the $200,000 in spec stop loss insurance was 4.418 million. So if we look at this deficit going back to 15, 16, we're up to 5.4 million in terms of what stop loss has paid above and beyond in terms of what we paid in premium. So we've gotten a really, really good deal on our stop loss contracts. And that's in large part how we've been able to build up such a good reserve so that we can weather a storm like that's occurring right now and has occurred last year as well. If you look at the current contract, you know, I just wanted to put some perspective as to some of the major variances that are occurring. Mental health, chemical dependency being one of the larger variances for the population. It's not so much the chemical dependency, it's more the mental health. And that's pretty much with all employers that you're seeing mental health become such a significant issue. In terms of the high cases and what we have seen through February, you can see that pretty much all of them are still active except for one of them that is terminated. And right now, the amount that is over that stop loss number is 845,000 and it's likely to be over a million by the time we get to the end of the plan year. So we know that there's some ongoings that are occurring, but it also speaks to the really good contracts that we've gotten to essentially not have to pay for some of this risk that has occurred.
So Chase, I'm just gonna stop you. So he put all of these handouts on one slide. The one on the left is the 169, page one, if you wanted to follow on.
These are really tiny and I can't read it.
Yeah.
This one slide.
So. Yeah, make him larger. So in your board book, if you had, if you go to
And I did reference.
The board materials.
Yep.
All of these pages are in there.
Under which there's.
Yeah.
There's.
So, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. So let, let me just start up here. So this first page that we went over, that's going to be reflective of the spring, spring block, rolling 12 summary, pages one and two. That's one document.
Yep.
What we're looking at here on the second slide, this is made up of what's labeled as a carryover report, pages one and two, and then the full preferred one utilization report for February, pages two and three.
So give them a minute just to open it and follow.
No, we don't.
What?
Are they randomly?
There's, there's four, three files named Claims Paid, Claims Paid, Claims Review. There's a COVID report and there's a benefit and claims.
I apologize. These were printed from the board book. Okay, so I don't, I'm sorry, board. I thought these were the same ones that were sent. Stacy, I don't know how we got the wrong files.
We have, we have three files uploaded that all have the exact same name?
Oh, no, we have Burnsville, Egan, February 2022 COVID report. Then we have Claims Paid through December 21.
So that first one, he said with the 22 is the COVID report.
And then Claims Review, Rolling 12 Summary, and then 2021, 22, Benefits Review.
Yeah.
Some of these might have been relabeled.
Yeah, I'm sorry, board. I thought that he was, he just didn't want to have a slide for all of this.
Whatever I labeled them as, what I sent you guys.
I'm sorry.
Open up.
Okay, so Anna got the one up. That's the COVID.
Oh.
Keep going.
Well, COVID's the next stuff that we'll get into.
There's nothing labeled, labeled spring book.
I wanted to see the one that I can't see. That's too small.
They must have got relabeled.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. Yeah.
We'll make sure to send the PowerPoint along with the, the re-labeling the, the documents that you did receive to, to match the stuff up. This wasn't meant to make it more confusing, but we didn't want to go through each and every document.
So the labels that I printed from the materials you sent matched was on the screen. That's why I'm confused of what they're seeing now. I don't know how they got different names. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how they.
All right.
So I guess any questions on this page before we move forward?
So Anna, yeah, this is the first one on the left.
Okay.
The Claims Paid through December 31.
Okay.
She found it. Yeah. They are in order of what you have on the screen, but they have to find it.
Okay. Which one are you talking about? The 21, 2021 or 2022, December?
Look at this one, yeah. Let me see how it matches. Go back to the first, the screen where you had the four on the top.
This one?
Nope. Keep going. The one that, oh, you, you made them bigger now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you can see it. Yeah, so the previous contract.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Now they can see them. Okay, sorry.
So previous contract ended at, you know, 89% in terms of the loss ratio. And really, we kind of want to fall between 80 and 85%. Anything below 80% is obviously great, but it does, it does indicate the plan ran a little bit hotter. But the saving grace was, again, the high cases that went over spec and didn't go against the net liabilities for the district, but it did total up to the 4.4 million dollars. And I wouldn't put perspective as to the primary diagnosis information because that's based off of, you know, the last claim that was processed. Some of it will give you indication as what's going on, some of it will not. But again, you got to be sensitive with this information, a lot, obviously with what has occurred. And, you know, for those that know staff that have been affected, you got to be sensitive with it. So this is an cumulative claim for that individual member ID. To the right, you're just saying the primary diagnosis is simply the last thing that was quoted. Correct. And it's not their specific member ID either. It's a scrambled ID, so it doesn't label anybody. Okay. Are we caught up? Okay.
Okay.
So I'll scroll over in the zoomed in fashion. And we can see, you know, for the current contract, we have 845,000. That is over the $200,000 spec or $225,000 spec level for the district. And most of these are still active high cases. And you can see, you know, based on some of the primary diagnostic diagnosis information, these are likely to continue based on the nature of what's occurring. So any questions on this slide and I guess the pages that you guys are now looking at?
So Chase, we paid the first 225,000 and the stop loss pays everything over.
Above and beyond. And, and it really just kind of speaks to, again, the good contracts that have been received for the multiple years where we've been essentially having claims above and beyond what the district has paid for that risk protection.
So did you say that there was about, like, how long ago did you say that, or what, something about where there was years that there wasn't any over stop loss? I'm sorry, I, you said something about how we built up the reserves based on the years that we weren't paying out on stop loss. So how long ago, how long has that been happening as far as?
Well, since inception of going self-insured. I mean, ultimately, if we didn't have the contracts that we did, there would not be the 8.6 million in reserve. Because we've essentially had claims go above and beyond what we paid for that premium by 5.4 million at this point, going back to 15, 16. So in theory, we're in the hole to the stop loss. So in theory, we're in the hole to the stop loss carriers, five point four million dollars, but it's not really something you reflect back on, you move forward on. We know we need to take the adjustments and that's one of the adjustments that's happening this year and we'll get to it at the end, where we're getting a fifty percent increase on our stop loss premium and it would have been much higher if we didn't have a fifty percent rate cap, to put in perspective.
So, just to try and just understand where we were at as far as high claimants prior to COVID. Where, I mean, what, what were they at? I guess is what I'm trying to understand, like, where, how many high cases were there prior to COVID? I mean, was it like just a few, was it?
Um, we've always had numerous high cases on the plan, but I guess to give you some perspective, Anna, if we go back, you know, I guess the year before COVID, um, we had seventeen high cases over a hundred thousand dollars and we had probably four or five that went over in that contract period of the two hundred twenty five thousand.
Okay, so four or five. And then, so during COVID, how many went over the two twenty five?
Um, well, I don't have the run out contracts, but based on what we were tracking, uh, looking at last year, there was sixteen high cases. By the point time of June, that were over a hundred thousand, we had six that went over the two twenty five. The amount that was over stop loss at that point in time cutoff end of June was two point eight million and what I just showed you is that it ended up being four point four million. So we've always had high cases, there's always gonna be multiple, you know, it's a credible risk in terms of the size. Obviously, it's shrunken in the last, you know, five to six years with the budget cuts. You know, when we started and we took this thing self insured, you know, there was, you know, probably thirteen hundred people on the plan. Thirteen hundred subscribers, contracts and over three thousand members and now we're down below a thousand and about twenty eight hundred members. So, you know, that's part of some of this is that we've had to deal with, um, um, not necessarily adverse selection, but we've lost good risk and bad risk has stayed and we've kind of seen it play out, especially these last couple of years. Let's talk about COVID, then we can go to the, some of the contract stuff. So as Stacy mentioned, COVID spend right now, so if we're going March of twenty twenty to almost the end of February, it is at almost four million dollars. And this isn't the worst that I've seen compared to other districts, certainly not the best, but it has been impactful in the districts that have been impacted the most have been impacted by the ones that have been a COVID diagnosis and COVID claims, which you guys have had two point one million in that category, on top of the testing, which is at the one point six million. So cumulatively, the COVID spend has been impactful both in testing, but those that have been affected by COVID and possibly that hospital inpatient setting.
So the, the last category registry members, so that's any uh, cost that's associated with someone having tested positive.
Tested positive and claims for COVID, whether that be treatment in a clinic or hospital.
Okay. Uh, tests and vaccines, I thought, I mean, I'd be very naive about this, but I was under the impression some of that was government funded or something like that. Why, why are we paying one for seven billion tasks?
So self insured plans, those employers are the plan sponsor. And that is not subsidized by the federal government. And I guess who's to say it is under fully insured as well, even though, um, you know, insurance carriers are getting reimbursement, but it's not necessarily reflective in the group experience for those that have had COVID claims and testing related cost.
So, so as, I'm not employed by the district, but as employed by a private employer, I have Blue Cross. Every time I went to get a test, well, yeah, my test, I assume these, when you say test, this is what we call clinic tests, these are like going to CVS and getting a test done or something like that, right?
Or a GS Labs or Infinity Balance.
So every time I did that, I gave my insurance information. Are you implying that my, that Blue Cross then was also charged?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought they were just, I guess I didn't.
Uh-uh, no, they were not.
If you have insurance, the insurance is paying. If you don't have insurance, then you don't have to pay.
Then you don't.
That's how I've understood it.
Hmm.
And that's where, you know, Minnesota's been great in terms of the free testing sites have been available throughout the state. Um, but obviously, you know, this has been a revenue scheme and you've seen, you know, numerous testing sites that are advertising and getting people to come. Um, and, and, you know, there was a need, obviously, uh, throughout the two years in terms of the peaks and valleys of this pandemic. Um, so i- i- it's something that, again, I don't think we'll see duplicated in the same manner. Testing's not going away, but it's certainly not gonna be at the pace and volume that it has been these last two years.
But the testing isn't like just the staff, it's also their dependence and their.
Their depend, yeah. So if you, yeah, it's, you know, you guys have the COVID summary report, but what I put into perspective for you is, um, in terms of the COVID registry, so COVID associated claims, that number of two point one six four million, you can see almost one point five of it is driven by dependence. And, you know, seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand roughly was by the subscriber. Um, looking at those affected by age, the big category was forty five to sixty four. Um, the sliver sixty five to seventy four, again, we don't have too many folks past the age of sixty five that are on the district plan unless they're still actively working. You know, they're forced to go to the retiree sup, Medicare sup or find their own Medicare option. But I will point out, so those that have been affected by Ca- COVID, the, the smallest category outside of the sixty five to seventy four is the zero to seventeen. So now when we go over to testing and we look at the testing by age category, forty five to sixty four is the biggest part of the pie chart. The second largest though was followed by the children, zero to seventeen, and those have been the least affected by COVID. Um, if you look below that and kind of see the graph, the peaks and valleys of when the volume of testing has occurred, correlate it, you know, with the different strains, whether it was Delta or Omicron, et cetera. Um, the thing that I think a lot of people are surprised at and or have issues with and are trying to think, you know, should we have this be a, a covered expense under the plan or make it part of member liability, is in that positivity rate. So statistically, the positivity rate is between four and five percent. Some are below, but most that I've seen are between four and five percent. So when you think about that and spending one point six or over one point six million for testing and having a positivity rate of less than five percent, essentially ninety five percent of the testing, not to say that it was a waste, but might have been unnecessary to some extent. So, you know, I'm not encouraging to say, let's make this a, a member liability and it has to go towards there are deductible and out of pocket, but that is what employers are considering at this point in realizing, you know, the abundance of testing that has occurred.
Well, that would also be like, if the requirement to come back with a negative test in order to participate because you have that requirement built in. In order to come back to school, you need to test negative. In order to go back to work, you need to test negative. In order to travel, you need to test negative. So you're having less positivity rate because you're trying to test negative.
Yes. In, 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 in some ways, yes. Um, you know, I think when you look at it now too, some people wanting to validate the result too, right? They get a positive test, but then they keep testing, or it's a negative result and they keep testing to make sure that it's negative.
It's not a false.
So that, that's kind of where, what is that true need for testing moving forward? Any questions on, on the COVID expense? But as far as that four million, you know, that number will probably go up through the remainder of the plan year. But if we look forward the next two years, certainly don't expect to spend two million or four million plus in COVID expense.
Is this looking into like long haulers?
Long haulers, um, I mean, yes, obviously there, there are some long hauler situations that have occurred and, um, you know, have been part of that COVID registry aspect in terms of incurring significant claims and it's a real thing. So there are people that have been affected and are still affected by that COVID diagnosis. Um, and, and, you know, it statistically has shown those that have had the inpatient setting and have been in a hospital for months on end, they definitely have a lot longer ways in terms of recovery and trying to get back to normalcy of life.
So my question would be then, how can you assess risk if you don't know people who are long haulers and how much those claims are going to be for however long they may need to care?
Well, so a lot of the cost associated is in the inpatient setting. So if they're not in the hospital, then they're probably not going to occur a significant expense. And I think, you know, in looking at the district, so we have twelve people that are unique members identified for that COVID inpatient admin. So really, twelve people are the driver of that two point one million of COVID claims. And that number's gone up. When we started the school year, we were at about, I think, seven or eight and we've seen, you know, a few more add to this point in time. So it obviously can still happen where somebody can be affected. Um, looking at this year's tracking, um, so certainly easier to look at if you have that document open, which I labeled as meeting three twenty four twenty two, uh, but I'll zoom in, you know, for aspects of this to show. So, right now through February, the plan is running at eighty three percent. Um, we're hoping that these last four months are four months of improvement based off of the volatility that has occurred in the previous eight months, uh, but obviously we have to let that play out. Um, when you look at that eighty three percent in terms of how we're running, running to our contract and how does that compare to our funding, well, we've depleted over one point three million of the reserve just in this plan year. And that's a pretty significant margin. That's the most that we've depleted in any plan year since going self insured.
Now, with that, this is what brings us back full circle with our prescription rebates. So while our plan has spent down about the one point three, we've added back in about another eight hundred thousand, a little over eight hundred thousand.
Nine seventy eight year to date and part of that is made up of the rebates received this year, but the reconciliation from the previous rebate uh, contract. So, and we knew this kind of going after this a couple of years ago where when the volatility started to occur, we knew that we wouldn't be able to add, you know, surplus to the reserve just, just based off the claims versus funding. So we went after the pharmacy rebates, um, and we optimized the contract even better last year. And then, you know, next year, probably looking to pull additional levers that we reviewed last year, but didn't decide to move forward with knowing that that would probably be a future play to try and curve, um, you know, extreme high costing drugs affecting the plan spend. And then, looking at the high cases, you already saw it on one of the previous pages, um, but again, we still have stuff occurring in terms of the nine that are over the hundred thousand and, um, what that's totaled so far in the eight hundred and forty five thousand over the two hundred twenty five. So I do expect this to be over a million by the time we get to the end of the plan year and certainly by the time the end of the contract with the run out. So, looking at it holistically, as Stacy mentioned, we're recommending a six and a half percent increase. But for your perspective, our contract is going up nineteen point three one percent. We're not taking a nineteen point three one percent, but that speaks to the, the utilization and I guess the stop loss contract being somewhat corrected to the extent that it can. So like I mentioned, we have a fifty percent rate cap. Right now, the district is paying one point two million for the protection of claims that go over two hundred and twenty five thousand. We're getting that fifty percent rate cap and it's gonna go up to one point eight million. If we didn't take this offer, the alternative was having two half a million dollar lasers, which would be an additional million dollars in liability and still paying close to one point six, one point seven million dollars in stop loss premium. So the rate cap, even though it's high, fifty percent, is still a savior in protecting us in this renewal setting with the volatility that's occurring.
So you're saying that rate cap allowed it to not go higher than nineteen percent?
The rate cap protected us from paying more than one point eight million for the stop loss premium.
So, was there any negotiating with P one on trying to get the nineteen percent down?
Yes.
And what happened? Nothing?
Basically, we don't have a lot of options in terms of the five point four million they lost on the stop loss already and that's really the driver of it.
So basically, the claims are the claims.
The claims are the claims, the fixed cost is the fixed cost. So you're running, you ran at almost ninety percent last year, you're running at eighty three percent this year. Your claims liability is going up essentially twelve percent and that's probably a favor. So when we funded this last year, we funded below the stop loss contract. And we're continuing to do that in taking the six and a half. So essentially, this is what this means in terms of liability. We're taking a six and a half percent increase. So current funding is eighteen point five million dollars. The six and a half percent increase brings it up to nineteen point seven, almost nineteen point eight. Our expected cost of our contract is twenty two point one seven four million. So essentially, we're putting up two point three million, almost two point four million of the reserve in terms of how this could play out. But that's again, why we built it up the way that we have, because statistically, three out of ten years are gonna be bad and essentially we're going through those three years as we speak. So coming out of this, even though we're taking the six and a half, if things turn around, we still want to try and recover and recoup to get that reserve back to where it was because we know that at some point in time, we could expect that same volatility. Any questions?
Not about that, but, so six and a half percent. What does that mean for the average employee in the district? What's, what's their additional cost?
It, it will depend on the bargaining unit because they all have different percentages for the family. So, you know, if, if, and I'm just gonna use the, for family, somewhere around the four hundred dollar figure, I think it's a little bit more than that. So four hundred dollars with another six and a half percent on top of that would be about twenty five bucks.
Per month?
Yes. Yep, yep. Most of our single coverage is around ninety five percent. So the district is picking up ninety five percent of it. Um, so the, it's a, that'll be a nominal fee if somebody is taking single.
And keep in mind, the nineteen point three one percent increase is not necessarily reflective of the renewal, but it is showing that we underfunded our contract last year and we're continuing to underfund the contract, so that's why it's nineteen point three one percent.
Over the past years, we have kept it between roughly two and a half percent up to just around five percent. This is the biggest increase that we've had since the inception of our self funded. So slowly, we have built up our reserve for the bad three years. This is one of the years, cause last year we were two and a half, wasn't it? Two and a half, two something.
We had a, yes, and we had, the plan ran at a deficit of a couple hundred thousand.
And we still have a forty five percent uh, reserve, which is around eight and eight point three million?
Eight point six. So putting it into that perspective, three years ago, the reserve was at eight point seven million. Last year, we depleted over two hundred thousand dollars of the reserve because the plan ran out of deficit. We're at a deficit of one point three million. So the fact that our reserve has only been affected by a little over a hundred thousand dollars, considering we've run a lot hotter than what our funding is at, speaks to the rebates, but also, again, building the reserve the right way to handle this type of volatility.
So, o- over the years, I feel that we have managed our self funded plan very well. Um, it is a rough year, has been a rough two years with, with the COVID experience that we've had. Um, at the same time, I've never recommended that we dip into our healthcare plan to help offset the expenses of our general budget. But at the same time, sitting on a, a reserve of over eight million dollars with what we're currently looking at with our fund balance doesn't make a lot of sense either. So again, it, it, it's, the recommendation that is coming to us from our consultants is at least eight percent because we're underfunding. And we talked with the benefits committee, I'm recommend- And we talked with the benefits committee, I'm recommending 6.5%. Spend down our reserve a little bit. We can't do this forever. We can't do it forever. I don't want to jeopardize our healthcare plan for our employees, but it will help us offset our budget for at least one year. And that's why we're coming to with the 6.5%.
And the assumption would be that after we're hopefully a year further away from the worst of the pandemic, things will start to normalize a bit more on the healthcare front at least?
I'm, I'm, I'm one of the believers that the pandemic is truly going to become endemic and it's going to have less of an impact on our healthcare plan in the long run. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we're coming out of the shadows. And I know hope isn't a strategy, but my gosh, I hope. The, for me, and we do know that our stop-loss insurance is underpaid. And it has been underpaid for some time because we're paying out close over $5 million, even though we're paying in about 1.2. The insurance company says this is a money loser for us. We need to right-size that. The one unknown for me really is the inflationary cost and how long that will continue. That's going to be, that's going to, that's the unknown and more so, I think, than the COVID piece.
And we're being mindful of the mental health piece that will not go away.
It's not going to go away and ironic, not ironically, mental health has, mental health has been an issue for our healthcare plan since its way back. It may not all be specifically mental health, stress, anxiety, depression, eating disorders. It has shown itself in a number of different ways. Chemical use, a number of different ways on our healthcare plan and quite frankly, in our attendance and sick leave. You know, how often make you hear, "I just need a mental health day." Yes, I believe they really do. And every, you know, all information leads that direction.
You think about the last two years and the educational setting, you know, probably one of the more, more or most stressful environments outside of, you know, first responders or, you know, the nurses and doctors. So when you put that into perspective, you got, the staff, they're frontline workers too, and it's taken a toll. And it's not just this district, it's pretty much every district across the country.
Any questions on pretty much why we're coming to you at the next meeting with this 6.5% increase? There is a lot here. And again, I want to applaud our benefits committee for meeting monthly to reviewing this information, having a far better understanding and staying with it and in the long run and helping us with the recommendation that comes forward to the board.
So the benefits committee is behind this recommendation?
The benef, I always apply pressure. I will say that first. So I meet with, you know, Chase, with Lisa, with Haley and with Tyler, and we review the numbers going into the benefits committee. So my push was looking at 6.5% instead of 8. The benefit committee had a discussion around that and they agreed that the 6.5% is what they would stand behind us while as far as the recommendation.
I do have one question. And I know that you probably, you mentioned this one time before about negotiating the, how much we contribute to the employees' premium because MSBA recommends that we negotiate a flat rate and not a percentage. So, the next time we go around for negotiations, what are the possibilities of trying again to negotiate it to a flat rate?
Quite frankly, I put it on the table almost every time with at least the different groups. And a lot of times, I'll even say, you know what? We'll give you the highest percentage, not the, we'll give you a high percent increase towards the dollar amount, a flat rate. That would cover both years. So let's say we're looking at a $45 increase over each year based upon the percentage increase that we're looking at. I may say, you know what? We will increase the contribution towards insurance for a flat rate that would actually cover $75. So it's almost a four-year flat base number that they wouldn't have to come back and experience an increase on. None of the groups have ever said, "Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to us, we'll take it." So it really depends, if you want it, how much is the board willing to go after it? If we had double-digit increases year over year, I would probably come to the board and say, "You need to do anything and everything and put a bunch of money upfront to get out from underneath this." When we've been sitting between 2.5 now and 6.5% increases, quite frankly, until this, well, even this year, my gosh, what am I saying? Even this year, it's inflationary cost. You know, our inflation now is over 7%. We're still under inflation. Sometimes it wins. And so far, it has, it has been a winner for us with the percentage. I'd love to have a flat base. What I'd really love is to have a flat amount for our HRA contribution for teachers, I have it with the rest of the units, and then start working on the, on the flat rate for the, for the premium increase. It depends on what we're willing to trade for. That's how they're going to look at it. What are we going to get in return? You know, based on some of the conversations that we had the last time with you, Director, was looking at a previous district in which I worked and where they did a match for the HRA. So if you contributed a certain amount to the 403B, they also matched that towards the, the HRA. So if I had a $1,000 match on the 403B, I got an extra $1,000 on, on that. Maybe carving out a different plan. We have our current plan for the single and family. Maybe we look at a match but have a higher deductible. Or maybe we go to a flat rate contribution. I mean, there are different strategies or different things that we might be able to look at through negotiations. But it has, it's going to have to be a win-win for both sides.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. Thank you. We still have about an hour and a half of our presentation. Thank you.
And rounding us out tonight, we are back to the FY23 Budget Workshop with Dr. Tracy Battle, Superintendent Lisa Ryder, Executive Business Services and Erin Tinklin-Bird, Director of Communication.
So, thank you. So we're not going to go through the presentation again. So we just would like to know questions, comments, unless you want me to go through it again. Okay.
Because at the last workshop, we were in consensus with option two.
Two, yeah, that's the one I turned to that page.
And that was what was represented tonight and then also with our direction of finding the coins in the cushions of the couch.
Recommended scenario two, pull up. That's the one I opened. Okay.
So leading into that with the additional adjustments from finding coins in the cushion and some of the other information that we've been received in terms of additional adjustments, is there any other questions or comments?
I have something that I noticed. I don't know if it's, I guess it's a question. But, and on the budget adjustment spreadsheet, wrote, the very, the very top, 1.2 special ed licensed staff, the percentage is missing. Was that intentional or am I, am I missing something?
I have that.
That's the only cell where the percentage is missing. So I was assuming that's probably.
I think that percentage is a combo for the two.
That's what I was wondering. Because it's right next to the special out here. So those two combined are 1.89. That was actually what I was wondering. Thank you. Also ironically, after all the talk of baseball and softball, I noticed neither sport is on the list of sports that are being potentially reinstated at the middle school.
Oh.
Well, we, I don't think we ever had baseball.
I'm not sure that we did either because baseball is.
Yeah, it's been through their clinics and, what is it? BAC? Yeah, it's the BA. That's why community ads, they work with it, that's where it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, I couldn't remember.
Thanks, Eric.
So as a school district, we don't even get the baseball players until they're in high school.
That is, well, yes, correct.
As a district.
Great ball.
Right.
That's the same for football, hockey.
I'm sure it is. Yeah, true.
So I have a question. We have declining enrollment as a district, declining enrollment in virtual academy projected, but we're adding NFT. That doesn't make sense.
Which line?
Uh, we're looking at S R 380%. And I would say.
That's a carryover from this year. It was slipped between VA and tech. And tech said it did not work out. They did all VA. Am I not remembering that? E80.5. This year, it's funded 0.5 for tech and 0.5. Am I mistaken?
No, you're correct.
Oh, okay. All right.
But what we found is the individual spent 100% of their time on VA.
But what we have declining enrollment there, why would, why would we use S R funds for something like, number one, why would we use S R funds for something like clerical?
That's what we could consider.
As opposed to learning? And why would we use S R funds for something in a school that we are projecting to have declining enrollment in?
Yes, Stacy said we need to look at those numbers and make adjustments. Yeah. Good point. Maybe they only need a 0.5.
I mean, I could see it at the beginning, right?
Oh, for sure. Yeah. Yeah. What we're hearing now.
That's what actually happened. We thought it was a 0.5 and they needed a 1.0. So your point is, why do they still need a 1.0 with the declining enrollment?
And why would we use S R funds for that, for a clerical as opposed to something that's student-centric?
It was just one of the, the needs to support students. If you have a school, you need clerical support. It's like any other school. 600. Go ahead, Brian.
So, not related to the 0.5, 1.0, but related to the S R funds, the why the S R fund. And I think part of the talking point was, virtual academy still does continue to be an option for families, also as a pandemic response. And so because there are families who are still watching, monitoring, thinking about vaccinations, otherwise, I, I think the, putting it in that area is because it is still pandemic response-related as virtual academy enrollment can, again, continue to attract families for safety reasons as much as educational reasons as well. So again, I understand, respect, 0.5, 1.0, I understand that, but I think that's why it's in the S R funds as part of that piece. As we also look forward with virtual academy of pairing that with sites. So again, it was just announced recently that Dr. Poehl will be taking over at Vista View Elementary and that is going to be partnered with virtual academy. That's where, again, over time, we might be able to look at some of the synergies that can be created, not just in our staffing for instructional staff, but also with our clerical staff as well.
Good point.
And I'm surprised also to see E80.19. I would have thought that this would have come forward earlier if for clerical support of administration of federal relief funds.
So that came on, we've had an increase, and what were the additional pieces we just got of money?
Yeah, so this year alone, we have, our number went up to $30 million of what was awarded to us in this given year with 17 of those grants still open and those dollars still needing to be finalized. Meaning they have to be journal entry coded, they have to be, the funds drawn down, and then the final reports must be made to MDE as well as preparation for the audit.
So we have one clerical reduction in one area and one clerical increase in another. It, it doesn't, it doesn't sit right.
And then we got feedback from our clerk unit, I don't want to bring Stacy back up, but if we don't do it here, the school clerks have to do it. The journal entries have to be done. So while we have the S R funds, that's why we considered it. So, yeah, we can take it off, but the clerks are going to have to do it at the site somewhere.
Keep in mind, this list is the supplemental need, so this goes away when the funds go away.
Right. It's just, it's just, it's just interesting to see the plus one, minus one in the same budget.
And so the technology, that their property values have increased, so the tech levies increased, and as Rachel earlier approved the purchase, she bought so much from the first S R money, S R two, that she doesn't need. So that's where she said, "I can get my clerical support with more employees having it." The elementary went from a two to one to a one to one.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about that one.
Oh. Which other?
It would be... 3.6 and then the S R 80%.
3.6 business office, the back on this one?
It's a plus one, minus one. 3.6 reduces.
$3,000.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Cheater's not working.
It's late.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, is it 3.14?
Yeah. The one, so earlier, there was go back and look at your right size and can we right-size here?
Yep, 3.14. Yep.
Yep, so that was part of going back to right-size, not only at the schools.
Financed clerical and then adding a financed clerical.
Exactly.
Paying forth out of a different budget.
Right.
That will go away and then be terminated.
So at what point will the, will the items that are in bold be vetted?
So, let me go back to the first part, the 80%.
Bold is what is modified, asterisk is though the.
So the clerical support, I, I, yeah, I kind of, I have the same questions. How are we going to get the work done? And if it does, does it just go to the school clerks? And the next one with the asterisks, scroll.
Yeah, and the 20%.
Oh, the inclusion playground. So you may recall, the city of Eagan renovated or upgraded their playground by Ron and our student, our Department of Support Services actually helped with the design. And so that led, we need, which playground is it?
It's actually both of them, that there's equipment out here.
Why don't we have an inclusive playground for R? And so this was an idea that just came up. We can use S R funds, that's a part of it. It meets. And so we're still vetting it. So I asked, I need to see the plans for it.
Yeah, and I, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the line item. I'm just asking, when will the items that are asterisked to be vetted, be vetted?
Okay, so I asked for the more.
I saw the PowerPoint today, so it's coming to you next week, he tells me.
Okay. And then I can make a decision next week. The out-of-school time coordinator, if you recall, last summer, we got those funds really late and so we really didn't spend a lot and we didn't have enough coordination. So I think. spend a lot, and we didn't have enough coordination. So I think there's, I asked some questions. I think there's different thinking about that now. Why would I pay somebody full-time for such a short timeframe?
We're exploring what, what that needs to really be.
That was my question back to them.
I guess my, my only, my only comment is that this is still a work in progress, and this board needs to see the final budget.
So part of it came from taking off all the COVID things, and I, I can turn back money to the federal government.
I'm just saying, we need to see the final. I'm, it's fine if you're, if it's still in progress, but it is standard practice for this board to receive the final budget in its final form. It's fine that this isn't in its final form. When would you bring it forward in its final form?
So, go ahead. The dot timelines for when MDE says we have to finalize our application. So let's go through that. That's when I actually have to have it final.
They don't have a method right now for us to change our application for S R, for S R three, one sixty-one, sixty-one. You can change your budget line items right now, but you cannot change your application. So they're working through a progress, a process that they can put out for people to be able to modify their application. Everything that you're seeing, you know, like the inclusion of any, any construction requires special approval. So that would go through other layers in order to get actually approved. The usage of your S R three funds between the years, that's entirely up to the district as to what level. And typically, as in other years, when we have federal funds, the federal funds are not finalized. We don't even know what Title One's going to be till next August. So what you get as a board is typically in June, the list of the total revenues that equal the total expenditures. And so if we only have identified, say, 1.4 million of S R twenty percent, that's all that you would see then in the revenue side. So we keep them equal so that there's, you know, if it shifts, then it's, it's an equal shift. It doesn't affect your fund balance.
So I could keep this the same, or when we come back in June, bring you the final list? Because that was your question.
Well, I really, I really just want to know, where is it that you're moving forward in April? You know, understanding all the puzzle pieces that are in play. I get it. This is, you know, yet another iteration of the budget, of course, that has some additions and subtractions that weren't there before. It is a unique year, but I think at the same time, I think it's fair for us to expect that we're going, maybe the dollar amounts might change, but certainly no new items. Right?
Okay. And so.
I'm asking.
The board, I can't, it's final. And then remember, we'll still have next fiscal year twenty-four to spend the rest there.
Right.
So what I don't identify, we'll just stop, and then I'll roll over to the next year, if that's what the board wants. Yeah. So I think I'll have these three. I don't expect any new ones. I think what happened when I took off COVID, what are, are there other ideals? Because we weren't at the fifty percent. And then that's when these came in. And are they allowed them?
And I'm just a process person. I'm just a process person. I.
For whatever action we need to take, because we have to rely on things at the April meeting, is anything related to HR staffing, is what I'm understanding. So like, we don't want to see other shifts in terms of FTEs in this budget.
Well.
Yeah. So the one clerical, yeah, that would. That would, to answer your question. But the playground, no, there's a lot more hoops we'd have to go through, as Lisa said.
I just want to know that the document we're looking at, you know, if this is it, is this the, the final list of preliminary adjustments?
Yeah, because I got to the fifty percent.
So it is the final version?
Right. I got to the two hundred thousand.
We're not quite there with the S R twenty percent. But this is the one that's going to be very difficult for us to spend if you do not allow flexibility for planning. Because if you do not get staffing, say, for example, for the program that you have listed here for tutors, and you're not able to spend the money there, then you need to be able to add in something else that will be something that families will respond to. Otherwise, you're going to be leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table at the end.
So I could stop, and then we just carry over to the fiscal year twenty-four, if that's what the board wants.
But as of this moment, you're kind of, you're implying that this is what you would be proposing.
Asterisk, I don't have enough information yet, like I said. Yeah, but yes, yes.
I mean, for the intention purposes, the.
So what's the?
The topic of use. So like, the playground or out-of-school time, the amount may adjust, but that's the intent and purpose of the budget item. So like, we might, we might not see, like, we're going to now add in something else.
No. And so if I say no to the, and they're coming back, because I just don't know why we would hire a full-time person for that. So that one will probably come off.
And then the one.
Go ahead, Lisa.
If it does, then we will be working with our current programming that we do and trying to find ways to get more students there, which, for example, one concept on the table that they're vetting through is this idea of our, I just lost the term, the summer middle school program that we do, Edge.
Oh, yeah.
How do we make that available for families who can't afford it right now?
Yeah.
The only way you can do that with the S R three funds is you cannot charge a fee.
At all.
At all.
Yeah. So see, that's why it's kind of hard for me to say it or stay in the same category.
Or you'd have to do every day that is Monday, or, you know, an even day or something like that. You know what I mean? It's like.
Free every Monday or something.
Right. And so they're exploring, what could that look like? Because if you do not have somebody programming new things, then we have to make use of what we already know is responding, people respond to. And how do we then instead make it available for more people to access?
Is that the same for the G I T, G T I?
G T I.
Is that the same kind of?
Yeah. And what happens with the G T I is the G T I timing is at the same time summer school's going on. Yep.
And I guess that, and I know that the federal funding, of course, will be coming back to us, right? We're still going, we'll still be getting those reports. 1.1 to 4.1 wouldn't change either, the dollar amount or the items.
Oh, the ones up above?
Uh huh.
No.
What we're looking at are the final, are the, for 1.1 to 4.1, those are the finals.
He added an increase in that, because those are the things we're covering right now. What, what numbers again? Which number?
So going to the very top.
The initial budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on this page, we're not looking at major shifts.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
So those, those will be what they are. Okay.
No. These, this whole one is because I removed all those COVID things. That's where this one, and of course, the Medicaid.
And then because Medicaid.
Yeah. And the assurance you heard went from eight to six point five.
So what I think I'm hearing, the non-S R funded things, that, that piece of the budget is pretty locked at this point. Where there's still some fluffiness is the S R stuff, some things that are still in the works.
So the, the right sizing and the budget adjustments outside of S R are what are done, are defined and done.
I have no asterisks on those. Right. So I'm saying those are done.
So the, the final budget adjustments will be the ones that are 1.1 to 4.1. The, the S R ones, we understand.
Okay.
They're still in the works.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do.
I think we're done. I mean, if nobody else has any other questions.
Do you two have what you need to keep moving forward?
All right. Okay.
You were going to say 1007, right? I said 1108.
Nobody wants to.
I just want to change my vote.